I will go ahead and call to order this special meeting of the Westland City Council. It is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, meeting on a Tuesday for once because of the President's Day holiday. We're starting at 5:30 because we've got a full agenda and wanted to make sure to accommodate everything tonight. So first items to approve the agenda, then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the February 18th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second to approve the agenda for the February 18th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can call the roll.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yes.
Counselor Bright?
Yes.
Counselor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Counselor Groner?
Yes.
Mayor Bielstaski?
Yes, thank you. So the agenda is approved and that takes us to public comment of a general nature for items not on the agenda. Anybody signed up tonight? I know we saw John McCabe signed up for later in the meeting. Okay. Well, then, we will move to item four, which is the Youth Advisory Council Recommendation on Traffic Safety. Very proud of the work you all have done, so happy to welcome up whoever would like to speak and provide the recommendation and presentation.
Oh, you could just sit at the chairs here.
You could just sit. We just have to make sure it's captured by the microphone, so just.
All we ask is that you, when you're about to speak, press the button on the mic so that it's green, green light, and then you want to be pretty close to the mic when you're speaking.
Yes, well, welcome and maybe if you all want to. Introduce yourself for the record and then.
My name is Brooklyn Carhoyer.
My name is Misha Rana.
My name is Sarah Yook.
I'm Ruby Facit.
And my name is Zachary Santoso and we are here from the Youth Advisory Council to present a little bit about traffic safety and especially about sidewalk connectivity.
Thank you. Awesome. Welcome. Go ahead.
So hopefully, as some of you know, we recently submitted a letter about this topic, about sidewalks and sidewalk connectivity. And one reason we are interested in this topic is because as youth in Westland, we love walking and biking around the city. And for many of us, especially kids and teens who are even younger than us and who can't learn to drive yet or who don't have a car, walking and biking is really the only mode of transportation around the city. And we love walking around here because there's lots of great parks, nature areas. As you all know, it's a beautiful city. And in many places, if you could go to the next slide, we have great sidewalk infrastructure, great bike lanes, like for example, one of those pictures is on part of Rosemont Road where there's really great bike lanes and sidewalks, or over on Ponderosa Road or towards the Sunset Neighborhood, lots of great neighborhoods and places to walk.
All right, and if we can move to the next slide. So like Brooklyn mentioned, while there are lots of great examples of sidewalks in our community, there are also some examples where that is lacking a bit. For example, in older neighborhoods such as Bolton and Cedar Oak, the sidewalks aren't very maintained or there isn't at all. As you can see on the pictures up there on the slide, some of those are just really old sidewalks where there is barely a sidewalk at all. And that's dangerous for pedestrians, no matter if they're youth or any other demographic. Another example of more high-traffic areas where there's lacking in sidewalk is at the end of Pimlico, there's not a sidewalk there. And there's also a bus stop. Presumably lots of people using that bus and getting off need to go up Pimlico, but that makes it hard when there's not a sidewalk available for them to do so. Or also at the end of Rosemont Road, by the stop sign where it intersects with Summit Street, there is not a sidewalk there. And I personally see lots of students walking to school or biking. And when there's not a designated area for them to walk or bike, then that makes it more dangerous. And even by the school on West A Street where it goes towards the stoplight, lots of kids also walk there. Even the cross-country team runs through there often, but there's not a sidewalk, which is just a little bit concerning for members of our community.
Moving on to the next slide. We want the members of our city to be able to walk around the city and not have to walk into the street because the sidewalk suddenly ends. We want parents of our city to feel safe letting their kids walk to school. We want our seniors to be able to walk safely around the city. And we want just our city to be very safe and accessible for all demographics of people. Like we mentioned, there are neighborhoods where there are barely any sidewalks, and that's a very big problem. These cracked, narrow, and even missing sidewalks are very hazardous for everyone, especially our children, seniors, and people with disabilities in our city. We as YAC want to advocate and take action to ensure that our city is providing safe, accessible, and walkable sidewalks for our city because this ties into our city's goal of transportation.
So as you all probably know, the city of Westland has four transportation goals for the Transportation System Plan. One, safety. Two, mobility, access, and the environment. Three, equity, and four, maintenance. If you could go to the next slide. So the sidewalks that we have right now relate to these goals in many different ways. Some meet the goals very well and some do not. So for safety, there's many tripping hazards and a large risk of injury with proximity to cars where there are no sidewalks. My own grandparents live in the Bolton neighborhood and I worry about them walking outside on their sidewalks because there are many cracks and places where they end, and I don't want them to fall and injure themselves. For mobility, the existing sidewalks in some places, specifically older neighborhoods, do not meet ADA accessibility guidelines. They end and start and, like, for access, sidewalks start and end in places that are not safe to walk on roads and they are not fully connected through areas that they should be. For the environment, limited pedestrian access makes people drive more, releasing greenhouse gases. If we can help create a more connected city plan of sidewalks, it'll promote pedestrians wanting to walk more and reduce greenhouse gases when they drive. For equity, there's a large disparity between older and newer neighborhoods. Like Brooklyn and Misha have mentioned, in newer neighborhoods, there's great bike lanes, new sidewalks that are smooth and wide and very safe and accessible. In older neighborhoods, that's sadly not the case. And then for maintenance, older sidewalks are not maintained. Some older neighborhoods do have sidewalks, but they're not being kept up so they're fully safe and accessible for everyone that would like to use them.
Okay. To wrap up, I really want to emphasize how there are some really great sidewalks in our neighborhood, but making sure that every single place in Westland has a great infrastructure that people can use. The Youth Advisory Council really wants to see more funding in the future for connectivity and great sidewalks in the city of Westland. I want to thank the council for our presentation today.
Well, thank you all for being here, and I'll open the floor up to the council in just a minute. But I was looking back at our recently adopted council priorities and this aligns very well with them. In particular, we're going to be looking at transportation funding and safety very soon. In fact, we're going to be having a joint meeting with the Transportation Advisory Board to talk about this exact topic. How do we get more funding for sidewalks and road improvements across the city? And so I'm excited because I'm going to use this recommendation to justify moving forward with the Transportation Advisory Board and kind of plug it into the conversation we're having. And we'll make sure to invite you all to that meeting to provide testimony because this was awesome and very timely because we've been dealing with a lot of different requests from neighborhoods for these exact kind of improvements. So thank you all for your work, and I want to open the floor up to the council for any additional comments. Counsel President.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, thank you so much, not only for your work on this project, but for participating in Youth Advisory Council and how important having your voice be heard is for us to listen to that and hear your needs too represented because often, people often come into city council meetings and aren't in your age group, let's just say. So we love hearing from all ages of people so we can know what your needs all are. And you're putting in a lot of effort, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Groner and then Counselor Bright.
Two, was very impressed by your testimony, both the written version and your oral testimony as well. And yes, what you want is very much what I think the entire council wants. The big constraint, of course, is money and we have to try to get funding. Putting sidewalks in all the areas that need them is a very expensive proposition, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Counselor Bright.
Okay, the light didn't come on the first time. Thank you all for being here. This is great. I walk all around the city and I live in Robinwood, so I walk from my house to the library in Bolton sometimes once a week. So I know where there are sidewalks lacking. I also think that we could do some other infrastructure and kind of notices about shared streets and slow streets so that the cars will recognize that they're not the only ones out there. My three kids all went to Rosemont and to Westland High and they did, they walked and biked pretty much everywhere.
Counselor Bonnington?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you all for being involved with this. This is really cool. And if it was something I knew about or existed back when I was your age, I would have really loved being a part of it. So I hope you are too. About a year ago, when I was first joining this council, I heard about this issue repeatedly and came to know more and more about it. And I discovered there's a list that's over 100 items long, full of different projects that have been proposed and studied. And we've done maybe like 10 of them, was my understanding, in about 12 years. So it became apparent to me pretty quickly that this is definitely something we need to prioritize. So I'm glad you are all seeing that the same way. So thanks.
Thank you, everybody. And I also recently, somebody mentioned Pimlico. I can't remember. And I was walking my dog up in the neighborhood above Pimlico and then I turned to walk down and it was nighttime and I had to like creep down the side of the street because it was so scary. So I don't totally understand it. So anyway, that's a tangent, but just wanted to empathize and we'll see what we can do with the funding situation over the coming months and keep you informed. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you soon at a future meeting. And also thanks to the folks in the back who didn't speak today, but I know you're all active participants in the Youth Advisory Council. So this is exactly what we want the Youth Advisory Council to be doing and I'm very proud of you all. So. Any comments from John to wrap?
Just wanted to point out a date. Currently, we are planning to have the council and the Transportation Advisory Board joint meeting April 21st in the evening. So that's a date you might put on your calendar. We'll obviously let you know if that changes though. But just to follow through on the mayor's comments, the TAB has been working on these issues and the council has been consistently interested in it. So this is great extra information. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. With that, we are a little bit early for the 6:00 PM joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Thank you, everybody, for coming. See you soon. I'll see you at a meeting soon. Is Gary, are you the chair of the Planning Commission now? Okay, is everybody here from the group yet or shall we?
We have, we have several members virtual and I see Matt Hasty's up there. We'll bring him in.
Okay. So. Get started a little early?
Yeah. Unless you're expecting anyone else to be here in person, do you know?
Is Catherine coming from the Planning Commission?
I just don't know about virtual versus in person.
I want to make sure that we respect everybody who's coming, so we can, should we take a little break? But I'll leave it up to the council. Just give it five minutes. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess to wait for Kate to get here from the Planning Commission because we are ahead of schedule, so I want to make sure to allow her to.
Great.
Come, given we advertised it for 6 o'clock. So we'll just wait for a little bit and reconvene. Thank you, everybody. Joel, we just, we just had Jason come in the room, so we're just waiting for Kate. We'll give it a couple more minutes and then we'll get going. Who's, are you the chair now, Joel?
Supposedly, yeah.
And congratulations and we'll get started in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think we've given it 10 minutes and we have almost everybody here, so we might as well get started. Is everybody's okay with that? Get started. Okay. Well, we'll restart the recording, restart the live stream, the community, and we will reconvene. The city council meets meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. And our next item on the agenda is a joint meeting, another joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss the Housing Production Strategy Project, very important work that we're doing. And I'll turn it over to the city manager to introduce those involved from the staff side and then we can have the Planning Commission introduce themselves for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and welcome Planning Commission. We're happy to have you all here and online tonight. My only job is to be Darren Wise tonight. Darren is out today. And I'll just point you towards the materials in the packet and a reminder that we all, many of those in the room, have worked on it much more than I have. Been working on this topic for years now. We want to thank the working group. We want to thank the Planning Commission and our planning staff and consulting team. The goal of today's work session, you've talked about the housing production strategies before. The goal of the work session today is to get final feedback, both from the Planning Commission and the council on the recommended strategies in the draft report. Any guidance that you can provide our team moving forward as we, as we move towards the finish line, I think, on this project would be very appreciated. And there's a pretty extensive report in the packet. I won't try to introduce any of that because I think we're going to have Matt Hasty do a bit of intro. Is that right, Matt? Great. And before I turn it over to Matt, I just want to note also that Counselor Bonnington was the council liaison to the working group and may have some additional thoughts to kick us off here tonight.
I would just say that from the first meeting, I was struck by the roster we had on this group. It was a lot of high-level professionals in housing from the area. And what was kind of surprising, or maybe not, was that there weren't a lot of options that we could actually use. That's not that Matt won't have a substantive report for us, but this is a really challenging topic and it was challenging even for these professionals. So I appreciate their work and I hope that this is useful to all of us moving forward.
Thank you for that. Awesome. And before we start, I want to have, let the Planning Commission introduce themselves. We can start with Chair Joel Metlin and then we'll go to Tom Watten.
Hi, everyone. Joel Metlin, Planning Commission. Good to see you all.
Yeah, Tom Watten, Planning Commission. And also, also I was on the committee for this as well that we're going to be talking about tonight.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that, Tom. We can go to Catherine.
Sure. Catherine Schulter-Hillan, Planning Commission.
Chris Kachariski, Planning Commission.
Welcome, Chris. Welcome to the Planning Commission as well.
Gary Walvati, Planning Commission.
Good evening, everybody. Jason Evans, Planning Commission.
Awesome. Thank you. And with that, we can turn it over to Matt Hasty from MIG.
Thanks, everybody. I am going to share a fairly brief presentation with you all, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. All right, can everybody see that? Okay. Okay, I'll see that on your screens as well.
Yep, we can see it and we can hear you well.
Excellent. Perfect. Okay. So I'm going to walk through a fairly brief presentation and Brendan Buckley from Johnson Economics, who's part of our team, will cover a couple of slides here as well. So I'll give you just kind of a brief overview of where we are in the process. As John said, we're nearing the finish line, so we'll kind of let you know what's come before and where we're headed. And then talk about the strategies in the draft Housing Production Strategies Report that you all got as part of your packet for this. Talk a little bit about a few changes to strategies since we last had a joint work session with you all. We're going to spend a little bit of time providing just a little bit more information on one of the strategies, the construction excise tax. And as you'll hear, that's been among the strategies that we've identified in the Housing Production Strategy Report. That's one of the ones that's had the most attention, so we're going to provide just a little more info on that. We did sort of a brief survey via email of both members of the project working group as well as some other folks that we talked to who are housing either producers or consumers that we talked to early in the process and we'll check back in with them fairly recently. that we talked to early in the process and we checked back in with them fairly recently. So we'll let you know what we heard from them and then also summarize what we heard from the project working group, which met just last week. And then, you know, look for, as John said, you know, any, any comments, guidance, et cetera, that you might have for us as we kind of take this forward into the, the kind of the final steps of the process. I'll do a real quick next steps as well. So that's what I've got for you, and I think it'll be relatively brief and happy to just answer questions, take any comments you all have today. So just kind of a reminder on the process and where we are. I would say this has been a fairly iterative process. We've gathered a lot of information early in the process about housing needs within Westland. This built on earlier efforts, the city's housing capacity analysis that was done a couple of years ago and adopted about a year ago. And so we've sort of gone through this iterative process of identifying, describing, and kind of winnowing, winnowing down a set of strategies to incorporate in this housing production strategies report. And then also for the, as we've winnowed things down, we've added more detail related to the steps that would be needed to implement each of the strategies. And that's kind of what you have in front of you, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So we're here for kind of our third joint work session with you all. And then the next steps will be to move forward into additional work sessions and public hearings to adopt the HPS document. So that's kind of where we are. And just a little bit more. What's that? Sorry. Okay. Keep going. So just a little bit more about the status. So again, we've, we've prepared this public review draft of the HPS report. Summarizes both the housing needs identified earlier in the process as well as what we've heard from the community engagement efforts we've undertaken as part of this process. Again, describes proposed steps and timelines for implementation of the strategies, recognizing that there's still going to be a fair bit more work on a number of these strategies to implement them. But this gives you kind of a roadmap for moving forward to do that, but it's not the end of the process. It's essentially, you know, a set of guidelines, a guidebook for moving forward to implement these things. We've also added some information that's specifically required by the state's administrative rules related to these reports. So including an evaluation of fair and equitable housing outcomes associated with the strategies. And then some information about how the city and also the state will monitor implementation and outcomes associated with the strategies. As I mentioned, we've kind of winnowed these strategies down to a list of, I believe, 12. The things that are not recommended, but that we talked about earlier, we moved those into an appendix of things that you could consider at a later date, but are not part of the strategies you're intending to implement over the next six years. It's a six year, every six years, the city and cities in the metro area update these reports. And then we added again some more information about construction excise tax and tax abatement strategies. As I mentioned, we conducted a stakeholder survey and gathered some more input and got a lot of really good comments about a number of these strategies and kind of things to think about in terms of implementing them, or in some cases with the CET, some concerns about that. And then I mentioned that just recently met with our project working group and got their take on things, and I'll talk about that in more detail. So just a few things, just some changes that we made, just some previous descriptions of these strategies since we last talked to you. There's a strategy related to updating systems development charges. So a couple of the change, changes here. One is to look at potentially reducing SDCs or deferring payment of SDCs for projects with accessibility features. That's sort of one of the potential options in there. And then just we provided some additional context related to SDCs around funding and revenue associated with SDCs and taxing districts. Tax increment financing, we added some information about how that relates to specifically the Riverfront taxing financing plan. Low income house rental housing tax exemption, we add information just regarding the applicability of that strategy and how it relates to different taxing districts in Westland, because you're not the only taxing district in the community. And then for construction excise tax, we clarified sort of the level of flexibility you have in terms of how you could apply construction excise tax, including different types of projects that could be exempted from that CET. So that's just some additional things that we added to the documentation since we last talked to you. I'm not going to go into this in a ton of detail, but this is a summary from our report that summarizes the implementation timeframe for each of these strategies, each of these 12 strategies, and the relative cost in terms of actual revenue or foregone revenue potentially in the case of tax. Relative level of effort for your staff to implement these things. So again, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I will note that we've tried to kind of spread out implementation. You know, you've got excellent staff, but they've got a lot of things on their plates. So we're trying not to implement everything right away. But there are some things that we think, and this was pretty vetted in a lot of detail in terms of the timelines. So there are some things that we think you could get going on and even, you know, put in place rather than later. So things like rezoning land, there's likely to be some steps towards that. Division 43 process, the city is also undertaking right now, and some other code updates that could also be undertaking, undertaken relatively quickly. And you could potentially begin applying some of these tax exemptions to specific projects in the relatively near term. So those are some of the things that show up as potentially things to get to, get started working on. Some of the things are going to take more time, more, more thought and sort of careful structuring in terms of things like the multiple unit property tax exemption. Item number four, tax increment financing, that's going to take more time to put in place as related to those districts. So some of these things you can get started on fairly soon. They're going to take longer to implement, and then I'll just note, public-private partnerships, that's just going to be in on. So we showed, showed that starting in 2026, but, you know, carrying through to the end of the implementation period. So maybe I'll just leave it at that, but I'll be happy to answer questions as we move forward here tonight about anything in the summary or in the report. So I'm going to turn it over to Brendan, a couple of slides, and then I'll, and then we'll see what kind of questions and comments you all have for us.
Thanks, Matt. Hi, everyone. I'm Brendan Buckley with Johnson Economics and have been working on this project. Just providing a little background on some of the economic and financial, you know, sort of inflected points that we needed to deal with. I wanted to talk a little bit more about CET and some additional information we've added. So just a quick reminder, the CET is construction excise tax. That's a tax that you can take on new development in the city to help raise money towards an affordable housing fund. The CET can be applied to residential development and commercial development. And the residential CET is capped at 1% of the permit value of new residential development. The commercial CET is actually not capped, and there are some various rules about how that's spent, but most of it is obligated to go to affordable housing projects. And this provides one of the few sort of sources to build a local fund to help contribute to affordable housing projects and really leverage some of the other sources that are out there by showing the local commitment and helping to contribute. So these are examples that we put in there of other cities that have adopted this across the state and more are considering it at all, all the time. So it is fairly widely adopted. And some of these programs we've looked into, and they've been able to really build up a very substantial amount of funding year over year towards their programs. Probably the most common thing is for cities to adopt the same CET rate for residential and commercial. 1% and 1%. It's sort of the most common combination, but that's not necessary. You can, you could set it at less than 1% or you could go over 1% for commercial development. And Albany just adopted or in, in the process of considering one as well. So they will likely be added to this list soon. On the right is our estimate of what the sort of revenues that might be built through a program like this in Westland. We looked at actual permitting activity for the past five years and averaged it out to look at the amount of development you had in, in the average year and just applied some various sample rates to that amount. And so what we'd see here is that based on that average amount of permitting activity with a rate of 1% for residential and commercial, it would be approaching building funds of about $300,000 per year. Some of the cities we talked to say that, you know, it, it's helpful to wait for the first maybe two, three years for that to build up, but then one to just really go, and then you, then you have a substantial. Next slide.
Councillor Groner has a question on that slide, real quick.
Yes, please. If we decided to use that strategy, what would we have to do? Does this require a vote of the voters or does the council have to approve this? What's the procedure?
Matt might correct me if I'm wrong, but I, it should just be an ordinance adopted by the city.
Yeah, that's correct. It doesn't require a vote of the, the citizens or the community members of the city to adopt this. And then there are some, Brendan mentioned this earlier, but there are some state requirements about allocation of the, of the revenues from the CET. So there's that. So I mean, it's mainly putting it in place is essentially adopting an ordinance to do so and then putting together sort of the process for collecting it and spending it. It's, it's not a huge lift, but you know, there is some staff time involved, and it does require the city adopting it by ordinance.
Good question. And what I'd add to that as well is that you can always, would be able to change the program over time as well by ordinance. So. It's not such a high bar. So CET case studies, we've added some to the information, just to give some ideas of the type of projects that you see. The couple of examples here, one from Corvallis and one from Milwaukee. You can see these are quite substantial affordable housing developments. And the way, as we've discussed throughout this process, you know, affordable housing needs a lot of sort of different layers of incentive and different programs. It's, they're usually have fairly complicated financing. And so the CET provides a way for the city to help contribute to that and help the, not the low income housing developers leverage other funding and from the state and other sources to help get the projects done. So.
We have another question from Commissioner Evans has a question for you about CET.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know the names of people that are presenting it. I see Matt on his name on the screen, but so the question to the presenters, how successful has a CET been in assisting with either low income housing or multifamily housing or middle housing in, in some of these cities? Have you guys familiar with, with that? Can you speak to that?
The programs have been quite successful in some cities. And it's, you know, kind of project by project, you have to go out and look for examples like these, but they, they are successful. As I mentioned, affordable housing developers are always looking to build that, you know, stack of financing that makes the project usable. And any incentives that local governments can offer help improve the odds that they will get some of that housing out in their community. Ben has been very successful. I know Corvallis has been very successful. And Milwaukee Tigard has a couple of examples. So, um, so it definitely works and it's, these programs can definitely be used and, and put use.
All right. Yeah, one more question there, it looks like.
Yep, Gary has a question. Commissioner Walvotny, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, mayor. So I had a question about AMI. I was looking in the document and I couldn't find the description, the explanation of that acronym. So I'm assuming it has to do with income, but I'm not sure.
Yes, sorry. That stands for area median income.
Okay, okay, great. The other question that I have is, is related to SDCs and, and the CET. So we already have substantial SDCs, and so some relief on that would be good. But then if we have a CET as well, if that is implemented, would that be basically just redirecting money that would have gone to the SDCs? Assistant development charges and instead would be the construction excise tax to be redirected toward housing.
So market redevelopment would be charged SDCs and the CET depending on the parameters that you built into the CET. So that would be sort of market rate standard housing development or commercial development. The affordable housing that might, for instance, get some funding from the CET pot of funds is generally exempt from paying the CET itself. So the, the affordable housing development will not be also paying the CET. Now, one use of a CET which can be helpful is that it can be used to sort of backfill other incentives. So if you offer the affordable housing developer a break on their SDCs, you can use CET funding to help pay those SDCs towards the city anyway, to pay for those system development charges. You know, and kind of backfill that incentive while the affordable housing developer is still, you know, receiving an incentive in the, in the form of a break on the SDCs. So there's quite a bit of flexibility on how you use it. And, but those types of things can be useful to make sure that you're not sort of necessarily double dipping or losing out on both SDCs and CET.
Yeah, and I would note that state rules require that a portion of the CET revenue be used for those types of things, for development incentives, which can include backfilling, as Brendan said, SDCs if you're providing exemptions for SDCs for certain types of projects. So there, there can be a close tie between those two things. But it's not sort of necessarily redirecting one to the other. I wouldn't, yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right. Just any other questions on this one before I move on and kind of cover the rest of the presentation? Okay.
Questions, you can continue.
Awesome. Thank you. So I'm just going to kind of give you a sense of what we heard from the survey we conducted and also what we heard from our project working group when we met last week. So when we asked folks, we asked folks who we hadn't talked to on the working group, you know, do you generally support the strategies that are in this draft, this report? And do you have any other thoughts? We asked everybody, do you have any other thoughts about them in terms of things to consider in terms of implementing them? Generally, agreement and support for most of the strategies with. Generally agreement and support for most of the strategies with the exception to some degree on CET. And I'll talk about that more in a moment. But otherwise, really strong support, I would say for these strategies. Um, a couple of specific things. One comment we had was if we're looking at incentives um, or specific development code requirements are that are intended to um, incentivize building smaller homes um, to meet housing needs for people who don't need a larger home. One of the folks we heard said avoid a lot of coverage or floor area ratio, that's FAR uh, requirements. Um, if we're thinking about that, we heard pretty strong support for updating SDCs, including um, scaling SDCs. So you're charging by essentially square foot. Now it's not necessarily for exactly square foot, you can do that via sort of a range of square foot size of a house pay this much and, and then homes in this other room pay this much. But there was some fairly strong support for that scaling SDCs by the size of the home. Also for deferring payment of the SDC until certificate of occupancy as opposed to when the um, the public facilities are actually hooked up. Um, and then some support for removing or uh, SDCs for ADUs and affordable housing projects. So um, fair bit of support there. And then again, mixed support for the CET, some opposition, some support. Talk about that more in a moment. Um, and then one of the things that we heard um, from, I think one of the folks um, we heard back from was to consider um, some kind of moderate income revolving loan fund as a public private partnership tool. So these were all comments that we still incorporate in an updated draft of the, of the HPS. So again, we met with our work group um, last week. And as you heard, Planning Commissioner Watten is part of that group. He's the chair of that working group and then Councilor Bonnington um, as well. So I'll kind of tell you what I heard and, and they may have things to add to this. But with the exception of um, the CET, we heard unanimous support for the strategies that are part of the HPS. Um, they um, generally thought what we said about the timeline and the implementation actions and partners made sense. The one thing we didn't hear unanimous support was the CET, which is why we're providing a little more focus and information about that tonight. So we had three folks who participated in that meeting say, yes, they can afford this. Three said, no, they don't. Two folks abstained. Um, and I would say generally um, the kind of opposition support was along the lines of the folks on the committee who work in the affordable housing development realm generally support and fairly strongly support CET because it is something that they can use to leverage um, other funding and make their projects pencil out um, more easily. Folks who from the development community and the Home Builders Association generally oppose CET. Because it does potentially, well, it does add to the cost of development. So they said, you know, generally they don't want to see some imposed that adds to the cost of development, particularly in a community where the cost of development is already high and where there are relatively limited opportunities in terms of land and sites for residential development. So that's what we heard from folks, but we also heard it's important to, you know, to talk to you all um, about the strategy and get some guidance moving forward. And our next step is to update the HPS document and then move forward into additional um, work sessions and hearings with y'all. So I think the question is, you know, do we retain this as a strategy in that revised HPS report? And take it forward into the Planning Commission and Council work sessions and hearings we have coming up or not? I mean, I think for me that would be the main question. Um, and that is kind of the next, the next steps in the process is to revise the draft HPS report and then conduct individual work sessions and hearings with the Planning Commission and Council. So that is it for my presentation and just happy to take any other questions or comments. And if you want me to keep the presentation, keep sharing the presentation or, or pull it down. Be my first question for y'all.
You could take it down and then if somebody has a particular question, you could just share it right back up. That's the way we can see you on the screen there.
Okay, sounds great.
Happy to open the floor up. We'll start with Council Groner and go around the room.
Yes, thank you. Um, there was a chart that basically had the revenue for various types of CETs. And uh, it looked like the 1.5% CDT yielded a total revenue of approximately $400,000. So am I interpreting it correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And that's based on some sort of assumptions about the construction rate in Westland?
Yeah, that was based on the actual realized permitting activity over the last five years.
So, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Comments, planning commissioners online or in the room? Tom Watten, you were on the group, work group. I'm happy to start with you too, if you have any comments.
Um, yeah, I mean, so obviously the focus for the last 20 minutes has been on the one that's the most controversial. All the rest of the, the options, um, I think, I think if everyone's had a chance to review and stuff like that, it, 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 those, those make sense. This, this one is challenging and, and uh, again, the group of people was diverse with developers, Home Builders Association, portable housing, myself and, and uh, also counselor. But living in Westland and, and uh, and seeing the, and, and the, the examples of other cities and the amount of commerce that they see, the revenue. I, I mean, we can continue to push this one along, but I, I don't personally, or not personally, but just in my business and, and in Westland, I don't see it generating more a significant amount of, of uh, opportunity. And in, um, and if you listen to the developers, uh, builders on this side of things, it's being passed on in a, in a market that's already, Westland is a, is a tight margin market for our developers here in town. Um, and they can attest to that. So I, I'm not, I'm not uh, saying that, that this one should go away, but I, I don't see it being, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, I personally, I don't see it saving. I don't see it having a big push or a big, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm rambling. I don't see it being having a big push or a big uh, it's just going to cost the home buyer. That's, that's basically kind of where I see it in, in Westland. In other cities, Bend, Corvallis, I mean, Grants Pass, they're, they're blowing up. They're, they're building all kinds of stuff down there, but, but we don't have the space and then we're not. So I see it hurting the, the home buyers, it's taking it out of the home buyer's pocket. Now that, that's what I took from it.
Thanks, Tom. And you mentioned Bend. I saw on the chart they had that CET since 2006. Think of how much they've grown since 2000.
It's, and it's, and it's very helpful for those kind of communities. I just, I think what we are, we're a bit of an island, uh, even in the Portland metro area.
Yeah, it's all about how much developable land you have. Uh, Council Bright has a comment.
Uh, just um, on the CET as well in the chart, it didn't show Oregon City or Lake Oswego having a CET. So I would think if we had that, that would have the potential to reduce interest in building in Westland if they could go to a neighboring community and, and build and, and pay less.
Mr. Mayor. I will just note that Lake Oswego does not have one. Um, they fairly recently went through a process of adopting an HPS and they did not include CET um, as one of the strategies there. In Oregon City, I'm, I'm not sure whether or not they have a CET or not. So that's just information related to those couple of places. Um, and I don't know Brendan, if you know if Oregon City has one or not?
No, they don't.
Okay, thanks.
Jason, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had a few comments here about some of the things I'm hearing and seeing. Uh, just to put things in perspective, I, I think that it's important to note that the Home Builders Association is an advocacy and lobbying group specifically for home builders. And they're always going to do what is best or advocate for what is best and most financially profitable for those home builders. Uh, that's not to say that their opinions aren't warranted or, or, or relevant. I would advocate strongly that if, if a CET was going to be implemented, that in conjunction with that, you would, the whole purpose of a CET and this whole housing production strategy is to find a way to get more affordable housing uh, into the city of Westland. And so by implementing a CET, I think you need to look at lowering SDC fees and uh, all at the same time. So if you just, if you just implement a CET, then it looks like you're just increasing fees. But you want to advocate for more affordable housing. And if you just increase fees, you haven't done that. So you got, I would encourage council to consider adopting multiple pieces at one time. Therefore, it looks like you're trying to lower the cost of the housing and to get more affordable housing, not just um, get developers pay more fees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other planning commissioners, any thoughts on, it, we don't, it doesn't even have to be just limited to the CET. That is the controversial one that I've gathered, a three to three split at the work group. Uh, Council Bonnington has a comment.
Uh, I will say about that, that I abstained and Commissioner Watten, you abstained as well because we were going to be receiving this. So we didn't feel it was appropriate for us to be um, weighing in on it, which is why there were two abstentions. But when I, when I first got started with this, I was fairly supportive of higher CTS and all of that. After, after this process, I really do get the sense we're leaning too far in that direction. And it would be counterproductive to continue to rely on developers to pay the costs to make this happen. So a change of heart there.
Thank you for that. Yeah, Commissioner Katariski, hopefully I got that right.
Perfect, thank you. So I would just echo what Jason was saying that, that it is, I feel it's very important to incentivize middle and lower housing. But the law of unintended consequences is such that if you, if you, if it's not, if you increase without relieving somewhere else, it will go to the buyer just because it's not, builders won't build if they can't realize the profit that they want. So I am concerned about housing in Westland and the barrier to entry. I'm concerned about how younger generations move into Westland, our kids, our parents, et cetera. So I do think it is important to find some way to create an incentive for that. Like as you were saying, where if it's, if it's take a little more here, it's giving a little more here. Just echoing that.
Thank you. Chair, Chair Metlin, go ahead. Then we'll go to Gary.
Thank you. Um, I do have a question since Matt, you brought up what Lake Oswego is doing in this one recommendation. How do recommendations as compared to how other cities are um, putting forward recommendations, so similar?
I'd say pretty similar sort of um, package of recommendations coming out of most of the cities we're working with. And in some cases, I, I think CET is one of the ones that some cities end up deciding to adopt, some don't. But I'd say a lot of the other strategies that are in the package that are identified, you know, to this place in HPS are pretty similar to what other cities are doing. There's, there's a fair number of them that are oriented towards um, tax abatement or other types of, or public private partnerships or land acquisition or donation that are really aimed at kind of making those affordable housing projects penciled out and work better. And then there's also typically a decent number of them that revolve around updating your development code um, to make, to either reduce barriers to or make it easier or provide more of an incentive to um, to build, you know, a, a range of types of housing. So I'd say pretty similar set of strategies coming out of most of the places that we're working with in terms of the, you know, the combination of things in the HPS. Is that, is that where you're?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I noticed in the report there was a I guess an option for calculating SDCs and basing it on square footage of the, of the, uh, the structure. I mean, if you've got more information that you can talk about regarding that now, that would be fine. But otherwise, when we get to the hearings, um, for the planning or the, 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 the meeting uh, with the Planning Commission, if you have any additional information that you could provide, that would be worth considering at that point.
Yeah, I can see just, just a little bit more about it um, right now and then happy to provide more information um, at the hearings as well. So um, up to maybe the last several years, most cities their SDCs just are, are for housing are varied by single family detached homes and multifamily homes. Um, but there's been a number of cities over the last several years that have um, scaled their SDCs more to the size of the housing. And there's different ways you can do this. Um, and I would say probably the most common way is to vary it by um, size ranges of housing. So housing homes that are between X square feet and Y square feet pay one percent of an SDC. And then um, the next size up pay a higher percent and the next size up and everything above that pays a higher percent. And those percentages don't necessarily vary a ton. They can, just depends on um, what you're looking at. I can provide some additional information about what some of the different cities that we're familiar with are doing or have done along those lines. Um, as a follow-up to this meeting, I, I will note that I am managing a park system plan update for your favorite Lake Oswego. And they, as part of their park system plan, they're updating their SDC methodology. And so they're looking at doing this specifically for the parks SDC. You know, if this is included in your HPS, you're still going to need some spend some, some time figuring that out moving forward. So the, this would be a general recommendation to say, when you update your SDCs, look at scale SDCs to housing size. And that's what came out of Lake Oswego's HPS process. And now they're implementing it in part potentially um, through their park system plan. But they have other SDCs too, right? And that's why this one, in the timeline, we said, this is the thing that's going to take that kind of entire timeline because it's going to depend on when you ultimately update your SDCs. So that, I don't know if that gets it at least some of the things you have, but I can, I can give you some more information as a follow-up as well, that that would be helpful.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is this going to go through the, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the end goal of our discussion is tonight uh, relative to the adoption process. So are we, you know, I don't know, I'm personally, I'm not ready to provide a recommendation on the CET. For example, I need to learn a little bit more information and go through that. But the other things I'm comfortable with, but I'm not sure if we're giving consensus on that or if we're just receiving information, then it'll come to us through the review process or what the uh, process is here. Matt, your thoughts?
Yeah, I would say it's kind of the latter. So what we want to know tonight is are there any changes y'all recommend or any additional information y'all want us to try to incorporate in a revised draft of this HPS that would then be reviewed again in a pair of work sessions and hearings with y'all? So that's kind of mostly what we're looking for. Are there any changes you think we should make before taking this, the next, the next iteration of this document through that work session and hearings process? Um, so just really questions, comments or potential changes? So if you were to tell us, oh, we as a group really don't like this CET, they would potentially pull it out and then you wouldn't necessarily discuss it again, you know, when we come to you for those individual work sessions or hearings. But if you say, hey, we're not ready to make But if you say, hey, we're not ready to make a decision like that, keep it in there for now. That kind of gives you the ability to have some more discussion and hear from the public too, as part of the public hearings process, before you finalize the HPS recommendations. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thanks.
Matt, I think it would be helpful, a reminder of sort of the, is the, is the document a list of strategies that we may consider in the future? Or a document, is the document a list of things that we are 100% on board with and gonna, gonna adopt for sure, right? It's, it's one of those things.
It's a set of things that you are committing yourself to moving forward on in terms of implementing them. It doesn't mean you absolutely have to implement everything in there, but there is a process by which the state will monitor your progress in implementing these strategies. There's a, there's a midpoint check-in with, between the state and, you know, each city that adopts an HPS. And if there's things where you say, well, you know, we had this in our HPS and we talked about it some more and we decided ultimately we are not going to implement this thing. And they're going to say, well, you're probably going to have to do some other things instead, you know? So there's going to be that kind of decision moving forward. So you are committing to moving forward and making some process or progress, excuse me, on implementing these things. It's not just a menu of things that, well, I could pick this one, pick that one and not do that one. Because, you know, again, it's, it's a state mandated process and there is a process for monitoring and your progress. So and, and the state is sort of working on some of those processes now too. So that's kind of as much as I have heard from them about what that process looks like. But some of that's still a little bit in flux, I will say, in terms of their process for working with cities on ensuring, you know, successful progress towards implementing these things. That was probably more than I needed to say, but does that help?
Well, I think that does help. The, I think the key point is that we are, we are required to do this work and there is oversight from the state. So if we were to pull out a bunch of the strategies, we would have to find other strategies. Because not doing anything is not an answer that's going to be acceptable. But we are allowed to, for example, consider a CET process down the road and work it through and come to the conclusion that it's not the right thing for West Lynn. And as Matt said, there, then you would be, okay, well, what else are you going to do to ensure that you're meeting the state mandates? So it seems to me that the list of strategies that's in here, that's been worked over by the working group and will be considered by the planning commission and council in April and May and a public comment, is going to be a pretty good list of things for us to start with and then, and then see where we go. But if there's, certainly if there's something that the planning commission, the city council just says, this is going to be a non-starter, we don't want to consider it, then probably better to weed it out right now and, and focus on the things that we know we're more interested in. And that decision doesn't have to be made this evening unless you all happen to know this evening that one of those things exists, then that would be awesome. Otherwise, we do have, we do have more time.
Thank you. Good. Context and thoughts, Council President Baumgartner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and thank you for all of this information. It's, it really is important that we're considering this. I thought a lot about this type of changes and how transformational they can be for our community when we were looking at potential school closures. And, and in my lifetime living in West Lynn, a lot of my classmates couldn't afford to start their young families here in West Lynn. Kind of was my experience, including myself. I lived outside of the community for a long time for that reason, affordability. And so I think that's an important, so getting recommendations to help us and specifically give, I like the way you're telling us, you know, well, this might work really well in Bend, but, but maybe won't be so helpful in West Lynn. I really appreciate that information. So I don't have any specifics, recommendations on CET, for instance, or, but I really appreciate us doing this process and all the time that has been spent by people on it. So I especially appreciate the planning commission and the working group on it. Thank you.
You, Council President, Councilor Groner.
Generally, I view a SDC charge based on square footage as a kind of a progressive tax that will hit more expensive, larger houses clearly, more than lower cost housing. The other thing is to kind of think about why we have SDCs in the first place. And presumably that's to support infrastructure. At least some of our infrastructure is the streets and roads of the city. And so maybe we really do want to count things like garages as part of that SDC multiplier. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Commissioner Evans, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just thinking on this here, you know, the housing production strategy is geared to get a certain level of housing built. Has anybody, either the speakers on, on the call or anybody on the planning commission or city councillors, figured out what level or asked if developer, you know, what level we want to try to get people in it and what it takes to get them there and what it could take to get affordability for developers to build that level? I guess it's a multi-question to anybody in the room who can answer it.
Go ahead. Gary might have the answer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, I think it's important to keep in mind that the middle housing requirements do not require affordability, they just require the construction of more housing. If, Matt, if you have any other information, but that's, I mean, in all of the consideration we've had for code changes, none of it has been related to affordability. It's entirely been about trying to get more, more housing on the ground at whatever price.
Thank you. And Matt, did you have any thoughts on that?
I don't have a great answer for you. I mean, I will say that it is a complicated question. And I will say that, and Brendan mentioned this earlier and he might have, you know, more to add here, but particularly for housing that's affordable to people below certain income ranges, either below 80% average median income or below 60%, they're especially in a community that where the cost of building housing is high. It takes a variety of different subsidies and or, yeah, subsidies or incentives to get housing built that's affordable to folks in those income ranges. And that's really kind of partly what this HPS is about, is creating those opportunities so that the folks who are out there building housing for folks either below 80% or maybe in the 80, even the 120% range, sort of medium, middle income folks, having those tools out there. But exactly how much, I mean, I have seen various sort of charts that say, hey, here's how these different incentives or programs contribute to the ability to build those types of housing. And we can provide some of that information as a follow-up too. But it's not a simple question or answer. It's a great question, but it's, it's not necessarily an easy answer. So sorry, I can't be more helpful, but I think we could provide at least some follow-up information about that. And Brendan might have some, and then I see that Tom has his hand up as well.
Tom, go ahead.
It's, it's really interesting because I'm also on the Riverfront Project Committee. Not exactly sure what it's called, but, but there's, there's three zones from Willamette Park all the way down past the falls. And, you know, there's talk in those groups about affordable housing as well. And there's going to be places, but there, you have river views and river views are not affordable housing in, in general. So what that does is it takes us to Highway 43 project and I am not on that committee. But that one, I think, has the most opportunity for growth in some of these areas that we're talking about. But what we need to do, and we'll be doing this, is changing the zoning along 43 in some locations to create little villages where there's housing upstairs and, and maybe, you know, right now, we can't go over two stories. So most developers, if they're going to be doing a large structure like is happening in Southeast Portland, it needs to be more than two stories tall to make it viable for a developer to even consider it. And, and the fact that there's limited amount of land along there. But if, when the rezoning happens along there, I think some of these opportunities that we're talking about, looking into could actually come to fruition.
Thank you. And Chris, go ahead.
I'm still getting over my anxiety of speaking into a microphone, so I'm sorry. I think, Gary, you make an interesting, you, you call to our attention an interesting fact about affordability not being part of the middle housing requirements. But I would say that if we don't make affordable housing a priority, it will never come. Developers will never do that on their own. If we just step back and do nothing, then the land will all get used and it will all go to million dollar and up housing. And I don't think that does our city any good. And I think that as Tom, I think point very much taken, that river views are generally not affordable. But I would like to challenge that thinking. I don't know why that has to be the case and why we have to put all the affordable housing on 43. I think that does make good sense, closer to services, closer to transportation lines and so forth. But from the perspective of the integrity of our city and of the quality of life and the character, I think we should be working toward that, figuring that out, how we can make it a mix.
Can I, can I speak? I, I completely agree with you. And, and that's where I go back to changing some of the zoning. There, some of the area near Willamette Park, there are developers that own that property where the ponds are, and I know that they have different ideas in mind, but they need, we need to change some zoning. And, and again, we will, so that, so that we can attack some of these issues to try to get these developers to bite on some of this. And there, there are developers that will, but it's going to be challenging. But I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughts.
Just a quick time check, we're at 6:55 and we've got a couple of minutes to wrap up and maybe take a quick break before we get into our up and lender discussion. So I'm going to go to Counselor Brack and then we'll close things up.
So with regard to Riverfront property, there's a new affordable housing development at what used to be Merrill Hurst University that is right there overlooking River Road to the Willamette River. It's a, it's a lovely place. So it is possible, but you do need incentives and you need to partner. I do think, and I am on the Vision 43 working group, and I think that there are a lot of opportunities within the Vision 43 with some zone changes to be able to get some more affordable housing in there as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor. And so I guess the, we'll just continue forth with the housing production strategy as we're required to do. And this will go through the planning commission process and then come to the city council for adoption. And I am sitting here thinking about how helpful the planning commission's been in past issues. And so maybe the, if you're all willing, the CET is something you can study and make a recommendation on. And then we can, of course, take that recommendation and adopt it or not adopt it. But if you're willing to go through that process, I'm sure we would appreciate it. I just feel like I need to learn more about what the potential revenue is and how it would impact the cost of housing and things like that. So I know that's my closing comments on that issue. Anybody else? City Manager Williams, does that make sense for a process?
Yep, I think that's great. And we'll, we'll also be doing community and public involvement to publicize these draft strategies before the adoption starts.
Okay, well, with that, I want to thank all of our planning commissioners for being here and our consultant team from MIG. And we will continue on the process for the housing production strategy.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
So maybe do a quick break. Okay, we're going to take a quick break. I just want to announce real quick, if you'd like to speak during the public comment portion of the up and lender discussion, we've got forums over there to fill out on the table and you can give those to staff. We just have to collect your name for the minutes of the meeting and the public record. So forums are right over there, where that gentleman is right there. So we're going to take a quick recess and be back in five, 10 minutes. Thanks.
Fourth person after we did.
The tip is all covered.
I'm wondering if there's going to be an investment, so it's always very money, don't worry. Because I'm sure there are people in the community that you think that.
Well, what I hear from people is, we've already paid for this. Why do we need to pay for it again?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you are, if you're interested, just hit us.
Okay, are we ready to continue? I'll look back to our live stream. Okay, we're ready to go and on the staff side, ready? Okay, we'll reconvene. This is the Agenda Item Six, which is titled "An Open Session: Up and Lander Next Step." It's kind of more of a listening session format. I'm supposed to give the welcome. I want to welcome all the members of the community here tonight to our City Council meeting to talk about Up and Lander. I'm Mayor Roy Belostowski. We're looking forward to hearing from all of you tonight. I'll keep it brief. I've just been involved with the Up and Lander issue since the very beginning in 2021, when we were approached for the first time by the school district about this. And obviously, there's been a tumultuous and unfortunate progression over the years is how things have gone with the court battle and things like that. But I'm really here tonight just looking forward and looking for how the city can move forward and how the community would like us to move forward, what the different options are. Different ideas have been proposed, and I'm sure some of you have them. And so I'm not really looking to revisit the past from the standpoint, like, it's like, how do we move forward with this piece of property? I'll just state one, one factual element, which is that we've received a letter of intent that some of you have probably seen from the school district. It's got a timeline where we would, if we were to sign that letter of intent, we'd have until May 23rd to enter into a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property. The key with that letter of intent is the price has gone up. So the past number for development value was 6.5 million. And now the new number based on new appraisal that the school district got is seven point, about 7.9 million. So price has increased. So with, that's kind of the key points tonight. And I just would ask that when we do get to public comment, I'll say it again, but just, there's a lot of opinions, different opinions in the room and out in the community. So just keep it respectful and we're here to really listen to you all. So I'm going to open before other councilors may have some opening comments and remarks. So I'll turn it over to Council President Baumgartner to make her opening comment.
Thank you, Mayor. And just on the, on the point of public comment, just for people who don't come to meetings frequently, when you want to speak, you can come up and sit in any of the chairs and just make sure the light is turned on. We are going to ask people not to cheer or clap, although we're very excited sometimes about what we've heard. And I completely can concur with that, but it just keeps things just a little more calm. So thank you all for being here. I, I will, I have decided to provide just a little bit of historical context, not to spend too much time on the past, as the mayor had said, because we're here for steps forward. But for those of you who haven't been following along, I, I wrote some things down to read. To provide relevant historical context for the public forum on Up and Lander, I present the following chronology, concluding with my own perspective as someone involved in this most recent chapter beginning in 2021. First, the history. In the mid 1970s, Westland taxpayers purchased the approximately 10-acre Up and Lander family property or the Westland School District to hold in reserve as a potential future school site. The property has since been used as a minimally improved, mostly volunteer-maintained youth sports field, open space, and unofficial dog park. Instead of building a school at Up and Lander, the district eventually chose to renovate nearby Sunset Primary in place rather than relocating it. In early 2021, after concluding that Up and Lander would never be a potential school site and with the likely anticipated need for future land purchases for new schools in the rapidly expanding city of Wilsonville, the district offered the city of Westland first right of refusal to purchase the land. The City Council, by unanimous consensus, immediately conveyed interest to proceed to explore the proposal for a real estate deal. Since the city has no land-banked funds, the purchase price was the first question. However, the district immediately rescinded the offer without ever giving a price. The Westland community, after learning of the district's intent to market the property with likelihood of development, began sending "save Up and Lander" messages to the district and the city as the shared constituents of both. Following the public outcry, the district returned to the City Council with a proposal that the city could purchase the land, but must restrict its use to open space or park land, a restriction that could only be lifted by a vote of the people. The city agreed to this proposed restriction and entered into a purchase and sale agreement, a PSA, with the district. The City Council then approved putting a bond issue for $3.5 million to purchase and make improvements before the voters for approval. In May of 2022, it passed by a significant margin. In the ensuing years, before and after the district sued the city to break the PSA, the council has conveyed to the district multiple offers within the limits of that bond amount, which ranged from 1.8 million to 3.5 million. To set the record straight, the City Council has never demanded that the district sell Up and Lander for $120,000. That figure represents a restricted-use appraisal valuation, but not the, the amount the city offered. To reiterate, the city offered its maximum of $3.5 million, and that offer amount was rejected in writing by the district in February of 2023 before they proceeded to take us to trial. A $3 million gap between the district's repeated demand price of 6.5 million, which was set by developer offers and an appraisal that they had received prior to our PSA, and the $3.5 million bond amount remain the sticking point. A $3 million compromise to enable Up and Lander to remain available as a community youth sports resource, a $3 million compromise to end the costly legal wrangling and regain community confidence in district and city leadership, a $3 million compromise to return balance and trust to arguably the most important partnership within our community between the city and the school district. It is my view that the $3.5 million offer also represents an attempt to honor the will of the voters and the financial best interests of Westland taxpayers. I believe that Westland taxpayers already purchased Up and Lander Field in the 1970s, when it was paid for with Westland tax dollars. And now the district is demanding Westland residents pay for it again, now at $7.8 million, funds which most likely go to build new schools in Wilsonville. $7.8 million is their recent appraisal if they sold it to a developer, yet the city would use the land as a sports field and park. We hope in earnest, we hoped in earnest that the district would attend this meeting today so we could have an open and transparent conversation and end this lengthy dispute. But they again have refused to come to the table. It is not the city who is being unreasonable, in my opinion. Two important general questions to frame and inform this discussion should focus on the following. Number one, what is the desired outcome of the Westland community regarding Up and Lander? And number two, what is the cost-benefit analysis of acquiring, of acquiring Up and Lander or not? These are the topics we should discuss now and seek input from city staff and community members to do so. Thank you for your time and interest in resolving this matter together.
Thank you, Council President. I know you worked hard on that statement. Thank you. Council Break.
So I've been hearing from community members, people when I'm out and about, saying, we need to make the school district do whatever. And of course, everybody has a different opinion. The school district is organized under completely different Oregon revised statutes than the city is. We are two completely separate entities, and we have no control over each other. So we can't make them do anything. We do share constituents, and our resources come from the same pool. In Westland, with limited commercial and industrial properties, the majority of the funding comes from the residents. It's in the best interests of our constituents to collaborate in providing for the overlapping needs within our community. I will say that over the years, the school district has used Up and Lander Field for many school functions. The property's provided the district with training space for cross-country athletes from Rosemont and from Westland High School. And additionally, we've got some other sports organizations. Westland Baseball, Westland Softball, Willamette Soccer have used these athletic fields. I don't know the agreement that those organizations have with the school district, but the city does not currently program any use at Up and Lander. So this is something that's completely outside of what the city is currently doing. But I am looking forward to hearing from the community members that are here tonight to, so we can see if we can find a solution.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Groner?
Yes, thank you. I think everyone on the council is very consistent in wanting to keep Up and Lander as a recreational area. There's, there's no dispute. But in order to do that, we really need to hear from the city about essentially what kind of deal they are prepared to support. And that's basically where we are tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bonnington.
All right. Thanks. I have also prepared a little statement. So the discussion around whether Up and Lander should remain a park has always felt pretty straightforward to me, even before I was involved with it. Of course it should. From 99 to 2010, my family lived on Haverhill Court, which is directly adjacent to Up and Lander, and it has a direct path to access Up and Lander. Before that, I grew up playing T-ball and baseball on those fields. In 1999, when the Blair Witch Project was at peak popularity, some friends and I spent multiple nights out there on the field recreating it with our family camcorders. Fortunately for all of you, I did not manage to dig up that footage. But please understand when I say that I'm as sentimentally attached to this location as anyone else in this room. That attachment of mine, though, does not mean that it's the right decision for the city to necessarily spend $10.5 million buying the park at the high-end market value. For several years, we've tried to come to terms with the district on this purchase. For several years, we have also been subjected to erratic illegal maneuvers and outright silence. We are currently still trying to settle the financial consequences of those decisions, but the city did not instigate and did indeed attempt to settle multiple times before the trial began. But we haven't had any help or communication from our counterparts. Their immediate rejection of our invitation to be here tonight speaks for itself. We are two weeks shy of it being a year since I was sworn onto this council. In that time, I have not been able to make contact with a single school board member, despite a number of efforts, and none of them have reached out to me. Within this community, there's absolutely no one else that I've had such difficulty in attempting to make connections with. I would think that the community would have the expectation that without exception, our two governmental bodies would have some level of working relationship. I know it certainly would have been mine if you asked me that this time last year. I completely understand if very few of you could put yourself in the position of a city counselor trying to navigate this situation with the public interest, present and future primarily in mind. But I do believe there's another scenario you can relate to, one that came to mind for me due to my experience as a Realtor. Imagine a property next door to you goes up for sale. You don't want to see anything built on it, but you also really don't have the money, nor is it necessarily in line with your family's short or long-term plans. After you go tour it, you go home to think and make it clear you'd like to discuss it with your family. Couple of days later, you get an offer sent to you that is completely out of the blue, without prior discussion, that isn't written on any standard forms and has contract terms that are intensely skewed in favor of the seller, especially the price. Also, the seller's laid out strict rules about what you can and can't do with the property after buying it. It's got your name on it, and they expect you to sign it promptly. They make it clear they will not entertain any negotiation or discussion of these terms. That's what we've been presented within the last month. That is the best comparison I can make there. How would you react? Now apply all of the other context and nuance of this situation from past years, especially the part where the entire neighborhood has been led to believe that you're actually going to do it. Now you find this pretty strange, I'd imagine, right? Would you even be comfortable entering into an agreement after that last one went so awry? I wouldn't be. I would never allow my clients to, to get into a situation like that. I feel even stronger in this stance because you've trusted me to make critical decisions on your behalf and safeguard the best interests of the public. So it is certainly not that I want to see the increasingly non-existent open spaces of Westland developed and essentially lost forever. I have felt strongly that in 50 to 100 years, the people looking back will be actively thankful for the breathing room and public space if it still exists. But that doesn't make it really feasible necessarily. We are not working with a seller that has given any indication that they actually want us to be the buyer. Rather, it feels like we've had actions, maneuvers, and terms of a seller that would really rather sell to someone else, as if they're trying to give the impression they tried, but we were too cheap or too unreasonable to work with. And that's sincerely not the case. I'm confident that this council's done everything we could to make that happen. So lastly, there's one issue that's far more important with much broader implications than just the Up and Lander matter, and we need to address that tonight. I had the pleasure recently of speaking with someone who had a profoundly positive impact on my life during my time at Westland Schools. A retired, beloved, high-level administrator, who I'm not going to drag into this, and I don't want to give the impression of taking any sides, nothing like that, especially because I hold the man in the same regard as Mr. Rogers. He was adamant that the district and the city need to be partners. He was adamant that the district and the city need to be partners rather than adversaries, that we need to start building or rebuilding our relationships, not through press releases or surrounded by lawyers. I understand the reality that the district faces an unprecedented depth and breadth of challenges. I certainly don't envy these, and I would love to offer any and all help in overcoming them, but it is a self-imposed challenge to shut out their community counterparts within the city of West Lynn. Ultimately, we are all, especially the children, far worse off as a result. Truly and sincerely, I welcome any efforts to turn this around.
Thank you, Council, for those thoughtful comments and everybody for their thoughtful comments on this council. Yeah, so summary is we want to act in the best interest of the taxpayers and manage our resources effectively, and that's all of our priorities, and that's why we're here, and we all care about the issue, which is why we scheduled this on the agenda tonight. So with that, that will conclude our kind of opening remarks and comments, and we can proceed to the staff report. Does that, does that sound appropriate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, we have on the agenda, we have purpose of meeting. I think you've already covered purpose of meeting. The purpose of this meeting that you have asked for is as a listening session. You want to hear from the community about the options. The options that you have been thinking about are listed on the agenda. It'd be super helpful if members of the community, when we get to the public comment part, can talk about these different options, or there's probably 400 other options that exist out there too that are possibilities. We wanted to lay out some of them and as a starting point tonight. The council also requested information about capital improvement and maintenance costs for the property, and Snow and Ice set us back just a little bit in the last couple of days, but we did get some material pulled together in time for this, and I'd like to ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Megan Bigjohn, to come up to the podium and present a couple of short slides about estimates of what these costs might look like. And obviously, in some of these scenarios, we're talking about part of a piece of property. So, and the other thing that I'd like to emphasize, Megan will probably say it again, we have not done detailed planning for this property. We have not had a community discussion about what this property would feature in terms of improvements. What we're trying to convey is a ballpark cost estimate for pieces that are typically in a park and what it, what it costs to build them for the public. So Megan, thanks for being here tonight and pulling that together, and I'll turn it over to you.
Well, hello, everybody. When I was handed this project to kind of look at our updating costs, I'll be honest with you, it was quite uncomfortable because I like to be very transparent, have some really good data and good information, and with this one, you need a little bit of a crystal ball. And so I wanted to show you what work had been done prior that had been presented in 2021 and kind of my line of thinking of what has brought us to the estimates that we have now. But do keep in mind, it is a bit of a crystal ball because we don't have a plan like John had mentioned. So I wanted to just give a brief recap of what amenities are currently on the site, and as Council Breck had mentioned, we don't manage any of that. And so currently, there's two fields there. There are one synthetic turf. Willamette United, from my previous notes, still may use that as some practice facilities, but not for any of their gameplays because it's pretty soggy there. There's also three pieces of, or there's a building that's there that's owned by the Lions Club that they manage, and then two containers by Westland Baseball, and then the irrigation system that's there for the school district. And a lot of the slides that I'm showing were what was presented before, so I just wanted to duplicate that and then give some updates. So before we get started into that crystal ball, I wanted to give a little bit of framework so everybody understood my line of thinking. When you go to build a park or design an area, the items that you see listed up there are just the start of what goes into actually getting your cost estimates. So for example, we don't have a landscape architect design. We don't have engineers. The fees are not associated with this for like SECs that would be required, the finishing items that go into that can be really expensive, you know, if we have a shelter, trash cans, benches. And then you go to the actual building when you have your contractor on site dealing with erosion control, any of the grubbing and clearing and grading, the utilities. So if we were to put a restroom on, we don't have current sewer heading up that way to be able to manage flushing those toilets. Would a fire hydrant be needed? What would be required by the fire department? So you can see all those items that go into play that kind of help you frame a cost estimate, and I just wanted you, everybody, to see in the public to understand we don't have any of this. So when we're looking at the costs, it's our crystal ball we're using at the moment with best practices and what we're seeing around the region. Thank you. So this park conversion amenity options was a list that was already created and presented in 21. These were items that we went out seeking, thinking that the public would want currently. This is all from previous research, and so these are all options. Some of the prices that I wanted to walk through of how they've increased over time and what they could be. They may be less or they could be more. The original cost for a restroom was $450,000, and depending on the unit that you get, that would barely cover the cost just to purchase a restroom. So when you're looking at having to do geotech framing of that, getting all this, you know, the utilities to it, it could be a lot more. I did reach out to Lake Oswego, who has just started implementing their park at the Reciek location where the skate park is at, to look at some of their current pricing, and that's where some of this has come in from. Their current restroom that they have that has three stalls was $800,000, but it had some upgraded amenities. So it could be less, but it could be around that price. Play structure, the original price that was quoted a few years ago was 300,000, and the reason why I bumped it up to 400 was because it says all ages. When you're looking at playground structures, they're based on age ranges, so that doesn't mean it's just one structure. It's multiple for tots and then for older kids as well. And so just cost of inflation with the CPI has gone up 9% since then, and so that was a relatively modest upgrade if we were to add a playground for all ages. The dog park, I kept the same because it depends on what we, what's going to be installed there. Is it going to be split rail fencing with wire mesh fencing? Is there going to be, you know, two gate system, which there should be, dog wash station, drinking, or drinking fountain for the dogs? From my experience, I used to manage four dog parks in the previous city I was at, and you have to use decomposed granite because the front area gets completely mushy in the summer or in the winter time, especially when a grass, an area is not set to be a dog park from the beginning. Asphalt, the price has increased. I was able to use information we received from Historic City Hall to upgrade that, but that price doesn't include the, the needs for doing stormwater treatment that would be required if we were to actually make that much space into asphalt. The other items below are very, very, they've kept them the same, but I wasn't, had a way to really update them as we don't know what the current pathways, where the amenities will go, so we don't know the length of the pathways. The irrigation, we don't know the overall status, and then the connections to the neighborhood depends on where all of the amenities go. The previous director had put in a 25% contingency for the overall of this conversion, right? This is all of the upgrades that were suggested, and that is because you just, we don't know. Most projects have a 10 to 15% contingency, so you can see this is an elevated price. And in the soft cost in general, we have no design work, no permits, none of that planning in place. The one item that I did add that was on the secondary list of amenities to upgrade was the drainage. That was left as an option in my heart of hearts is to make that field completely usable. It was disclosed by the school district and then talking to some of the users. To make that field fully optimized, we would need to improve the drainage there for everybody's use year round, and that 500,000 was from the previous quote that was there. So I just wanted you guys to see, there, there could be more, there could be less, depending on what was chosen for these options that are there. So now I wanted to get into the maintenance, and this is something that the council will see in future, but for the public to see. We are working on a maintenance plan for all of our parks properties, and by taking out by each area, such as the athletic field maintenance, we, we've made a list of what the frequencies would be by, by year, by month, that we would be managing our sites. Now, this is optimal, right? It's based on if we have enough money to do all the irrigation, to be able to do all the sweeping of the synthetic turf. This would be ideal, but when you look at it for mowing, we'd be mowing 34 times in the year, and right now we mow once a week in all of our sites, and so adding this 10-acre space, we'd have to have increased of material or maintenance staff as far as seasonals, potentially an additional equipment. So if we were to have the optimum upgrades that were there, I wanted to be able to show this is what we would be doing normally at our regular park. So say you're thinking at Tanner, Tanner Creek, or another park that we have where we have restroom cleaning. The 304 days came out of me counting the, the number of days that we would be working in 2026 to come up with that, where we'd be going to the site daily, removing the trash, playground inspections, dog maintenance park inspections, and then the basic maintenance that goes along with managing a park. So now to look at the estimated, again, crystal ball. When you're looking at the inspections, this is for what it is currently, and there is still some estimates that have to be obtained here. When you look at the price of the dollar amount that we'd be going there, originally, the previous director had said it would take a half an hour of maintenance daily to be there. That's 10 acres. I added it into an hour because you have drive time to get there, and also if we're truly doing inspections on those other fields, we need to have that time to actually be on site. The $65, I wanted to be able to explain that because that seems like a scary price. None of us make $65 an hour, right? But when you look at that, it takes more than one person and a variety of people to maintain an area. And so it goes anywhere from myself to be able to work with the citizens, which is not as much nearly as our park supervisor, our parks maintenance, one, two, and three. The parks maintenance three does all of the irrigation. It would be handling the turf itself. Parks maintenance one and two would be managing the mowing and as well as the, as the daily check-ins and the trash. And so when you look at a dollar amount, the previous figure that was given was $60, that was in 2001. So with the cost of all that it's gone on for labor, 65 is not much of an increase. So what, what I did like that the previous director had down is if we were to increase this to have regular restroom cleanings, he added that it would be a potential 25% more of an increase of managing this property. And so that is what I had as far as the evaluation goes. Like I said, it was uncomfortable because I wanted to be able to be very transparent with the cost, but I wanted to be able to articulate to everybody here where there's grayness and where my assumptions were made. That's what I have. Are there any questions?
That's a conclusion? Oh, well, first of all, thanks for pulling all this information together, and I can imagine how forecasting this kind of stuff is, is pretty difficult. So that's my first comment, and I'm happy to open the floor up to Council for questions. Council Breck has one.
I do appreciate that you included that large contingency. Before you have design, you have to have a large contingency because we don't want to go down this path and then find out later that we didn't budget enough to, to do what we need to do. A second comment, and of course, this is based on what was asked for previously, but we could cut some of those costs if we didn't do all of these things at this park.
Correct.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions from Council? Okay. Well, no other questions, so we can continue on, and just thanks for pulling that together.
Thank you.
And that has been posted to the agenda page if folks want to review that in more detail. So with that, we can move on to public comment at this time. So, well, I'll just read the framework for the discussion, and obviously it's not limited to this, but I wanted to read the four options that we had put on the agenda to, to discuss, and folks can propose other ones as well. But option one was to attempt to use the existing $3.5 million in, in bond funds to purchase part of the Oppenlander property, for example, five acres or less. Option two was to explore alternative financing options like a private fundraising, developer partnership, et cetera. Option three was to ask taxpayers to vote on an increased new bond measure to purchase the Oppenlander property for the school district's firm price of 7.875 million. And I just want to add to that, Council Bonnington mentioned earlier, you know, the 10, 10, $10 million figure, and that's with improvements. So there's several improvements that the city would have to make to just bring the property up to code. For example, the bathroom, $700,000 on there. You have to have that, ADA improvements, et cetera. So 7.875 is the purchase price, but then you also have improvement costs as well. And then the fourth option is do not pursue the Oppenlander property acquisition and focus on other park and community priorities. And with that, we will go to item, which is what everybody's here for tonight, which is public comment. And again, if you'd like to speak, we have forums over there to fill out and hand to our staff, and we have a couple of folks to recognize first. We're going to recognize, is there a youth sports representative here from Westland Baseball? We know they use the field, so we wanted to make sure to, so would you like to come up and speak? Then we'll have Friends of Oppenlander and then General Public Comment.
So for everyone, for everyone tonight, just as you come up to the podium, make sure that you, you can sit at any chair, make sure the light is green, and bring the mic pretty close to your, to your mouth so that everyone can hear you and the recording can catch you. Thank you.
All right.
State your name and city residence, and then we'll give everybody three minutes, and if you go a little over, that's fine. We're really here to hear folks and listen to the community.
So my name is Seamus Barron. I live in West Lynn. I'm actually the vice president of the Westland Baseball Association and a longtime baseball, football, and basketball coach in the city. Apologize, I don't have a lot prepared. I was asked at the last minute to fill in, but I just wanted to comment on, you know, what the impact to the baseball association would be if we were to lose Oppenlander Park. It is an instrumental piece of the Westland Youth Baseball Program. The loss of the park would result in the loss of the three youth-sized baseball fields, which is a significant portion of our youth baseball fields. So that's ages five to 12, but where the real impact would be is at the senior baseball age group, which would be, you know, approximately 13 to 18-year-olds. We have two senior regulation-sized baseball fields in the city, that being Rosemont Ridge Middle School and currently Oppenlander. We're fortunate that the school district and, and the high school baseball program worked with us to let us get some time on the high school field as well, but that's not a guaranteed. So the loss of Oppenlander would result in a 50% loss of facilities that we could use for our teenagers. And it would almost inevitably result in probably loss in opportunity to our teenage baseball players as well because the logistical difficulties or impossibilities, it's already logistically very challenging to put together a schedule that allows everyone who wants to participate to, to do so and have field time. The loss of 50% of our facilities would cripple the program at the senior level especially. So the position of the, of the Westland Baseball Association would be strongly in support of any and all options that move us down a path of retaining the park, understandably balanced with the fact that we can't pay an unlimited amount and that there, there has to be that cost benefit analysis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for filling in and being here. Appreciate your comments and understand that it's a asset to the baseball association especially. Thank you. Mr. Surr? Welcome back. How many times have you been here to comment on Oppenlander? I think this is the winner right here.
Thank you. Sir, this is all my fault. One, negotiations start the door of the school district and city. I felt I could make a relationship that was the school district, many of the city, citizens, and as we know, it's been a long year.
Could you turn, make sure the microphone's on? We just, I'm seeing a signal from the back there.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. How we got here is interesting, and it's a long and winding story, but it's all water under the bridge. It's really what do we do from here on? And for better or worse, right now, the responsibility sits with the school district, with the city to make a decision to help us get this to the finish line. Oppenlander is a 10-acre, 40-year legacy site. With all respect to our, our Parks and Recreation Director, it's been operating at its current level of services and improvements very efficiently, so we don't have to expend all those dollars immediately, and we haven't done the planning on the park if we were to acquire it, which we should do in a more formal process. So we need to be careful about how we, we set all these dollar goals. West Lynn is known for its parks, its green space, its trails, its rivers, its schools, and a good peaceful community, a family-based community. That's what attracted my family to West Lynn. I know it attracts others. Quality of life, raising our kids in, in an opportunity and a space that's not just about cell phones and virtual relationships. It keeps our, those resources keep our housing values up. They'll be beneficial to us if and when we sell, and it's also what people are looking for as they move in. The city council, for better or worse, if we're to do a bond measure, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, has just about a week to act and to get the city staff to work through their processes, so it's very urgent. Friends of Oppenlander was formed with the idea of passing that initial bond measure. We then committed last fall, after two, three years, that we would help raise funds to purchase Oppenlander. So if that three and a half wasn't enough, we would, we would increment up, but we are unable to do that full lift of an additional $5 million up to buy this property. So today, I want to say that we are throwing our support behind a second bond measure, one that would be an, a, a second layered bond on top of the existing three and a half to get us up to the school district's demanded sale. to get us up to the school district's demanded sale price of 7.875 million. That would include the ability to do some level of basic improvements, but not that whole list that was listed earlier. The cost of that second bond, the first bond was about 20 cents per, per $1,000, about $20, excuse me, it was 5 cents per $1,000, about $20 per average household in the city. The second bond would be slightly more at about 28 cents per 1,000. So the total per household would be less than $50, about $48. Now, that may vary because of inflation and things I don't know that the bonding people might tell us. So it's not a huge lift for us. We also have, we'll hear a little bit later, certainly from the community, about all kinds of different variations and ideas, hopefully. We want everybody to share whatever ideas, even if they think they're crazy or, or unattainable, but I think that helps us all draw a conclusion. And I apologize as I run over maybe another.
We're going to be flexible with the time.
Yeah, another 30 seconds or so.
Finish up in the next minute.
But we, we believe that that's a reasonable price to save this asset for the community, not only for today's kids, but for the adults. This is so much more than just a dog park. There are a lot of dogs out there, but there are a lot of kids. There's thousands of kids that use this park every year, and they're not on their cell phones. They're out building relationships. It's just really important. There is no more flat land to be had. So in closing, you'll hear from the community, we need to preserve this land. The new homeowners, if this was to be let go and let the school district sell the property, it's going to go to developers. Nobody else is going to buy it. I could put a cow field out there. Those new homeowners will be expecting everything that we're talking about tonight, all the parks, all the services, all of the green space that we get today from Oppenlander. And it won't be there, won't be there for us, and it won't be there for the new homeowners. So letting Oppenlander slip away, in my opinion, is, is a, is a non-starter. We need to hang on to this for today and for the future. The city needs to act now. We want to inform the city. And just a reminder for the people behind me, if you have something you've been kind of itching at saying, you can still turn in that form and make some comments as we proceed through the hour. Thank you all so much for your hard work and for your patience through this process. It's been four years so far.
And I'll just add to that, and I forgot to mention in my opening comments, the February 28th is the, you mentioned that, that we have a week to act. February 28th is the deadline to have a ballot title over to the county. So, for, for the May ballot. And I will say that during a conversation with school board chair, the issue of the timeline came up, and it was a firm decision from them that they wanted this to be on the May ballot, if this, if the city were to do a bond measure. In other words, there was not a lot of flexibility to go into November for various reasons. So that puts us in a little bit of a time crunch at the city from staffing and other things. So I forgot to add the timeline element. That was a part of the negotiations. That was a line in the sand so far.
Like council, our staff is awesome. So we can do this. We did this last time with the last bond measure. So I'm confident that we can, we can do this by working together. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dean.
And I'll leave the light on for whoever follows.
So we kind of invited Dean as the president of Friends of Oppenlander and then the baseball association to be kind of the stakeholders tonight since they are important users of Oppenlander and the ones connected to it. So that was why those were first, and now we can turn to whatever order we have from our staff for speakers. And again, please feel free to sign up if you'd like to share some comments with us. So we can, go ahead.
Okay, first we have John McCabe, who's online. John, you are up.
Greetings, John McCabe, Westland, Oregon. I want to start with the last month meeting. If Oppenlander is sold to, by, to any party, the school district has already said, and they've already practiced it, there is no more money going to the land bank. The land bank is making fake loans because the law is, is they can loan money to the general fund, and then they have to pay in a period of 10 years or less, back all the money. And the first borrowing they did was one and a half million dollars, and they have defaulted on three payments. They have no intention of ever paying the money back to the land bank. And so essentially, money's going to go from Westland to help Wilsonville. There's going to be no more money in the land bank until we get a new superintendent. As far as this being on the May ballot, I think that's excellent timing because the school board members that refuse to communicate to the public can be removed from office by the vote of the people. There'll be three candidates up, and this should be one of the things they should say is, is the school district changing this properly? And if they say yes, they can receive a no vote from the public. The other part of it is, is when you talk about, earlier today, you were talking about the systems development fees that will go in certain areas. This property here has one, the exit and entrance is just in one area. And so you can make the systems development fees to improve for this area to like something like $40 million, which would make it prohibitive to any developer. And therefore, there would be only one reasonable buyer who would be sold to at the rate of it being a park, not for development. I think this city needs to get proactive in saying, you can play this game. You have a one-way street. Here's our one-way street. We are not going to allow whoever comes in here to get a reasonable systems development fees. And then the other, last item that we've all been misled on is the talk that is already going through the primaries in Westland was after next year, even though they said they were going to keep the schools open for two years, is they are going to close them starting in the 27, 26, 27 year. And they don't want to bring that out now because, again, people would vote against the current board members that are running for reelection. It has to be disclosed. We're having no transparency here. We have a school district that's looking out for themselves, and I think people should vote for Oppenlander and against anything the school district wants to do with the GO bond because there's a lack of transparency. We have been already caught by the Oregon Department of Revenue for doing non-legal activities with a lot of their financial statements. And that is, needs to get out more to the public of what we're dealing with. I think we've had very good administrations in the past. I don't think we have one now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. How many folks are we talking about, would you say? Does any? Yeah, so if you'd like to speak, we're going to, we have to have you sign in on that form that goes to our staff, just because we have laws around meeting minutes and, and we have to have your name for the record. the request is to allow young folks to testify to get home for school because it's a school night. We, we can, the council has indicated that's fine, so we can take some comments. But it's hard for me to know who's out there that wants to come up and speak from the young. Okay, come, come on up. No, no problem. Thank you for flagging that. And I know it's a school night, and there's homework and things, and we appreciate that. Welcome, and just state your name and city of residence and.
Hi, my name is Quinn Hogan, and I am nine years old. I live near Oppenlander, and I play there all the time. It is my favorite park, and we need to save it. It is a great place to have fun. There are many sporting events and activities there. Plus, the fields are dog-friendly. At Oppenlander, you can kick a soccer ball around or learn to jump rope. This field is a place to enjoy the summer playing with your friends. There's no one, nowhere else like, nowhere else like it in Westland. There are also many sporting events at Oppenlander. Baseball is a sport people often play there, and it is a great field for everybody, young and old. Dogs love to run and walk around these fields. Dogs play throw and catch. They're a lot too. Plus, it is a habitat for lots of wild animals. I can hear owls hooting there all the time. Please do everything you can to help us save Oppenlander. Thank you for listening.
Come on up. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Bacon. I'm 10 years old, and I'm a local resident here in Westland. I live very close to Oppenlander, and I want the city to buy it. Oppenlander is a beautiful park. There are many reasons for it to stay. For one, many sports teams practice there. Throughout last year, I have gone there to watch my younger brother's baseball team and my twin sister's soccer team practice. On many occasions in the car when we drive by, I've seen other residents there with dogs or just with younger children to pass the time. I said this to my mom the other day. Why have a really awesome school district where teachers and principals care about the kids and then take away what children love and enjoy? Not only is this sad, but they'd be taking away something that is beneficial to our mental and physical health. On countless occasions, I go there with my friends to play. I remember summers when my sister, my friends, and I would sit in the grass and do arts and crafts. We would roll down the hills, and we would look for four-leaf clovers. Just the other day, my sister and I were there with two of our friends playing in the snow. When we got there, we saw that many others had already made snow sculptures and giant snowballs out of the snow. Oppenlander is so much more than open space. It's a place for local teams to practice and compete. It's a place for families and neighbors to gather. It's a place for kids to get their wiggles out. Our community doesn't just want Oppenlander. We need it. I hope the city will preserve it as a park forever. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dean. Well, welcome. Just state your name and city residence and go ahead.
My name is Bear Peterson. I live here in Westland. I play baseball. I love baseball. It's probably my favorite sport that I play. And not only is Oppenlander a place to play baseball and to help us get better, it also creates memories. Like, the first time I, when I first moved here, I was new to the neighborhood, and my best friend at the time, we went to Oppenlander like every day, and I created so many memories there, I just can't imagine Oppenlander going away because it'd be me and everyone who's had made experience there, made memories there, losing that. And I don't think any of us kids, even some adults, could take that. Like, um, people bring their dogs there, people play there. I play baseball there. I don't really have anything to write down, so I'm kind of making everything up right now.
You're doing a great job. Don't worry.
I play baseball at a more competitive level now, and we don't very, have very many practices because there are barely any fields that are large enough for my level to play. I use 90-foot bases, and there's field bridge, but that's only for kids at the younger age. The only ones we have are Rosemont, Oppenlander, and then the high school, but we barely have to use the high school because the high school kids use that. And the thing is, we can't get better if we use the smaller fields because we're not getting as much practice as we should be. And we all want to get better. We love the sport, and we really want to play. And it's just a great place for kids to go hang out, and it's such an important part to this community. And if you're thinking of it as just an open area, we have Tanner as an open area, but that's the only place with baseball fields. Like, there's nowhere else for baseball players to go to play, like. This is the only place where we can play baseball, while other things can do other places. Like, if you were to put a baseball field or some sort of field on Tanner, that's different, but then you might as well just keep Oppenlander. So, think about it.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other youth members there? Shall we continue on? Okay, we'll continue on. We have a, in the order that we have.
Next, we have Terry Cummings.
Hi, Terry, welcome. We received your written submittal from Old School District Memorandum.
Thank you.
State your name. Yeah, it's on. State your name, city residence. You have three minutes. You can go a little over if you'd like.
My name is Terry Cummings, a Westland resident. I'm a former city councillor that was serving during the time that Westland-Wilsonville School District was looking to put a, a bond on the, on the, on the, a go-bond for, for capital improvements. And there was quite an outrage in 2007. I wasn't on the council at the time, but I was involved. And I was, I remember being at a meeting when all kinds of people were all upset because the Sunset School Siding had just recommended relocating the Sunset School to Oppenlander, and this just created a huge uproar. Both my sons were in sports, and we were always aware of how little sports field place we have in Westland. It just was never enough, especially for the younger, younger teams. And the very idea of losing Oppenlander was, was just inconceivable. People were really upset. That, when the school district put a measure, their, their go-bond measure on the ballot in 2008, it only passed by a half of a percent. Now, I have family in, teachers in other districts that have always been envious of how Westland and Wilsonville passed their, their levies so easily. This time it didn't. It barely passed a half of a percent in 2008. That was a wake-up call for Westland-Wilsonville. And so they, they formed this new 2009 task force. And that's the letter that I wrote about in the tidings, and I'm submitting to the record. I want everybody to see it. I want you to especially read the part where it says, "Oppenlander Fields Beyond Its Validity Value to Community Sports Is An Important Playfield Annex For All Westland Schools." And at least twice in this letter, it talks about how the school, if the school can get sufficient area from Westland, and this would take a vote of the people, because you can't, we have a charter requirement to go to the people, to ask the people to surrender park property for something other than park use. So, so after the school district started to negotiate with us in late 2009 and 2010, we rushed to put something on the ballot in, in the May 2010 election based on the understanding that this, that this school district intended to maintain and enhance Oppenlander, especially parking, as a playfield annex for all Westland schools. And throughout this letter too, it also says, "Continue, continue." It uses the word "continue." There's nothing in here that says, "Maybe someday we won't." There's nothing that has changed. The school district has not acquired new playfield space. The problem here is the school district recognized, and it's in this letter, that, that the constrained, small, old constrained sites in Westland do not meet the school district's criteria of 10 acres for a primary school. As it is, when, when the voters agreed to give up 1.66 acres of Sunset Park to, to have enough land to redevelop Sunset School on-site and keep Oppenlander as a playfield annex for all Westland schools, even so, it was only going to be about 6, 6.1 acres. So it's still below standards. Our primary schools just don't have big, big baseball fields and so forth. They don't have 10 acres like, like they do in Weston, in the Wilsonville area. So we, there's an inequity problem here that Oppenlander continues to address. Okay, nothing has changed. The school district hasn't gotten more land. Betrayal is no small thing. The people of Westland agreed to sacrifice part of their property based on the idea that they would get to keep Oppenlander. We also purchased the Parker Road property from them in exchange. We sold land to them. We bought land. We also, the people also voted to have it annexed into the city, which increased its value. So all of these things were based on faith and trust. We didn't have anything legally in writing saying, "Okay, if we do this, you're going to keep this as a playfield annex now, aren't you?" No, it was based on trust. What is that trust worth? What is the will of the people worth? So I, all I can say is, yes, like Mr. McCabe said, there is an election coming up. And I urge everybody to ask. And I urge everybody to ask the people that are running for office, "Do you, what, what, what does betrayal mean to you? Do you plan on keeping your promises to the people of West Lynn? Because we bought this property already. Should we have to buy it twice? I don't think so. Can we work with the school district? Ask the school board members. Are they willing to work with us? Because, because we're supposed to be partners, aren't we?"
Thank you. I appreciate the historical perspective. Do you, do you have any recommendations about how we should move forward at this time? Like with the bond measure, private, private partnership, partner with developer, whatever the, I'm sorry, if it were, if you were up here?
I, I, you know, I am so disgusted that they even, um, came up with this false narrative that it was, would be in West Lynn's lap, when it's always was their already obligation. I mean, I mean, votes were taken based on that, you know? That being said, I have to admit that they've done a lousy job. In this thing, it says that they, uh, plan to maintain and enhance Oppenlander. They haven't done that. There, there isn't even a bathroom. I mean, it's, it's pathetic. Even though, no matter who takes care of it, it, it benefits the students and that's who will primarily be using it. So if West Lynn takes it over, I mean, what should we do? Charge them a fortune for using it? No, we wouldn't do that, would we? That's not what we did with, with Fields Bridge when they built the middle school, knowing that they'd probably be using those fields over there for their students, right? I mean, that's the way it works when you have a partnership. So...
That's tough.
I think that the district should be happy to take West Lynn citizens up on their offer for three and a half million. I think they should be grateful that they're not going to have to, uh, well, they never did maintain it, but they should to have to maintain that property. And they'll, they'll get a much better facility if they work with the city. But it's not reasonable to charge us a commercial price for it and still expect us to, to use it for a park, to their benefit. It's just all ridiculous. And, and the school board members that are running for office right now, we need to, we need to, and whoever else is running for office, and I hope some other ones will, because I'd like to see, um, some people that are actually willing to be fair with the city of West Lynn.
Thank you. And thank you for your thoughts and sharing a little more with us.
Um, Harland Borrow.
Welcome. Just state your name and city residence and have a three minutes. I'm letting folks go a little over just because we want to hear from folks.
I'm Harland Borrow. I'm the Land Development Acquisition Manager for Icon Construction. And we're a developer here in West Lynn. And we sent an email earlier today that had, um, an alternative approach that is sort of a compromise and might be a way, uh, without a bond measure, or if a bond measure doesn't pass, that, um, the property could be developed and keep a park. So, uh, unfortunately, it came later, so I guess you couldn't pass it out, but, um, the idea is that, uh, with the current zoning, which is R-10, um, the back three acres would become the park. And that's big enough for two ballfields, uh, and then a park area with parking, restroom, play area, covered and uncovered, um, picnic tables, that kind of stuff. Um, and the front seven acres would be roadway and, uh, twenty-two R-10 lots that, uh, more than likely, uh, with middle housing, uh, we could, uh, split most or all of them, uh, in, into smaller lots that would then be, uh, provide for some housing affordability and, you know, certainly well under, you know, the million dollar or whatever that people put on the average price. It also talked about, um, trying to integrate that approach with also, uh, the property that we own down on Lamont Falls Drive, uh, that there's a desire, it's a little over an acre there, um, to have that become a community park and, uh, community center. There's already a building there. As, as a sort of landslide swap with, uh, some surplus property that the city owns up by, uh, the, um, water tower up on Skyline. So, the way that this could work, um, would be if the city were to enter an agreement, uh, with the school district, as long as that was assignable, then the city could assign it to us. We could move forward, pay for all of it, pay for, uh, the land use process and all of that. And once that was concluded, close on the property and then sell the, uh, the city back, the improved park, or around what you have in your, in your bond funds that are already available. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments and email earlier today. Any questions from council that we'd have to look into further? Uh, whether, whether, if council's interested in that. Shoot, I'm just grateful for willingness to propose an additional solution in addition to what some of the community members are going to do today.
Yeah. And the only thing I would say is, um, by having the park done as part of the subdivision, uh, it can be done for considerably less because it's not, uh, a public works project. So...
Thank you for that, Council President.
Yes, uh, thank you for that information. And I really appreciate kind of creative solutions because I understand that, um, I'm sure people sitting behind you maybe are not eager to hear the concept of part, partial park, partial development. But those are the kind of solutions, honestly, that we need to consider with the financial requirements that were laid out by our Parks Director, among other, um, realities. Do you have just any estimates on the, the cost of that three-acre? I, I didn't get a chance to look at the complete packet you sent, which for everyone's information is going to be attached to the meeting. So you can look at it online, what he's referring to.
Yeah, so the, the general thinking was, um, the three-acre park would be about three million. And then five hundred thousand could go toward, uh, you know, the development of the park. And, uh, when we started looking at it just real quickly, without again, any design or anything, uh, we think we can do it for probably less than a million dollars. Um, because we do a lot of the construction work ourselves, um, and it can be done a lot more affordably. So, whatever the cost, uh, of the park would be above the, say, five hundred thousand, um, then we would build it and, you know, could get reimbursed with SDC credits or whatever. Like a, a normal subdivision, when, you know, a park is developed, usually the developer gets SDC credits for the work that they put into developing the park.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. That's really interesting. I appreciate that.
Yeah, there. Council Bonnington?
I wanted to thank you for bringing that proposal forward today. Uh, to my knowledge, we haven't had any public-private partnership proposals throughout this process, right? Uh, until now. So, that is a very helpful, creative solution. I would say to, uh, to the people of the city that you can probably get the sense from this council that we would not necessarily rush into something without having a serious conversation about it with you all. So...
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Steele?
Keith, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council for having me here to address you this evening. I appreciate your time. I haven't met most of you, um, but my name is Keith Steele. I've lived here in West Lynn on Miles Drive, adjacent to Oppenlander, for the last twenty-seven years. Raised three kids, all of which went through West Lynn High School. Uh, I served on the West Lynn-Wilsonville School Board from 2009 to 2017, serving in the role of Board Chair for three of those years, Vice Chair for another three. My father-in-law served as the Mayor of West Lynn from 2010 to 2015, and several years on the Planning Commission prior to that. So, we are a family that values giving back to our community and we take our role in it and its development, um, seriously. All this is to say that I'm very well aware of the history of the fields and the many efforts of the community and city and of the school district to work together on important issues like this one over many, many years. Sometimes successfully and other times unfortunately, less so. Um, listening to the opening comments of the council and some of the folks who testified this evening, I can see their emotions are raw. This has been a journey. It's been in many ways ugly. Uh, there's been a lot of feelings, uh, on both sides that folks have been mistreated, uh, uh, and treated unfairly in a lot of this. And I think a lot of that is true on both sides. But I will say that I deal in the, in the world of the real in the sense that there's a world that we idealize, the way it ought to be, the way people ought to treat each other in, in discussions and things like this. And then there's what's actually happening in the world. And as leaders of our government and our community, you all are tasked with dealing with the world as it actually is, not the way we want it to be. So with respect to Oppenlander Field, I don't need to tell you all that we are in the final hours. What is said or done, or not said or done, in the coming days will irrevocably change the landscape and the character of our city forever for hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And so it's important to get this right, and I know you all know that. At this late stage in game, there really are no do-overs. Now, several ideas have been presented tonight and have been kicking around. I know all of which have pros and cons, and they have their supporters and their detractors, as there is in any public debate. But the one that I'm asking you all to consider right now, this evening and in the days ahead, is effectively the swap of the Parker, Parker Road land for Oppenlander through a sale and the use of those proceeds in combination with the bond that's already passed to not only purchase Oppenlander, but to supply the capital improvements and perhaps even a maintenance fund, uh, and an annuity that would fund its ongoing maintenance. I've done some back-of-the-nack in, um, estimates of what that value might be based on, on Oppenlander's current value. And I think the numbers that staff presented tonight could be covered without any additional funds necessary by the public. This proposal has several key advantages, and I'd like to name those for you. Number one, no additional tax dollars or bonding authority required, which helps to, not to further exacerbate city finances. Number two, there should already be enough money left after the purchase to implement needed improvements, as I just mentioned, all again, without any new bonding or debt authority. Number three, compared to the 4.8 million dollar bond alternative, rather than having two park properties that need to be maintained, under this proposal, only one would need to remain on the books, again, helping to not exacerbate the already stretched park's operating budget. Number four, Oppenlander gets at least a couple of orders of magnitude more use every year than Parker Road. The twenty-ish hours or so, uh, of parking that that field supplies for the summer concert series is not a sufficient enough reason alone to retain it when the pressing higher value uses are possible. Number five, the Oppenlander property is large enough to accommodate multiple uses, including the potential use as a rec center site in the future if and when the citizens of West Lynn authorize that as a use and choose to fund it. And for the record, I am not anti-rec center, and this should not be a referendum on the rec center. But there are more than one, there's a more than one piece of property where that site could be located that would meet the public's needs, and I believe that should be considered. And finally, number six, development of the Parker Road property, I believe, would have fewer cantankerous neighbors uh, and would be more compatible with the non-R-10 uses that were, that had been under consideration and were discussed briefly here this evening than Oppenlander would. And while I don't speak for the school board, I've spent eight years walking in their shoes. I know how things go there, and I believe that there is a zero chance that the board will reduce the price or agree to partition property and sell part of it to, uh, the city as much as I would like either of those things to happen. So potential strategies that depend on either of those two things happening, in my view, are doomed to fail and we should not waste our time on them. Wrapping this up then, I would, I would look to you, uh, I would look to both of these publicly owned pieces of property, the one in Parker and the one at Oppenlander. And I think in two years, a likely outcome is that one of them is going to be full of houses and the other one is going to be preserved in some capacity as an asset and a jewel for the benefit of the citizens of West Lynn. And the question then becomes, which one is it going to be that we preserve and for what reason? Right? And so, as you look ahead, I am, I am not at all opposed to the 4.8 million bond. I agree with Dean in the sense that the, the voter should have a say in how they want to save it. We could, you could potentially put both measures on the bond. We can save Oppenlander either by selling Parker Road and redesignating Oppenlander as a future potential rec site, or we could, um, not do that, or we could pass the 4.8 million dollar bond and let the citizens of West Lynn decide if and how that property should be saved. So, again, I thank you for your time. I know this has been an arduous journey. I know there's a lot of decisions that need to be made in the next ten days. They're not going to be easy decisions, and so I empathize with the spot that you're all in. I urge you to keep an open mind, keep focused on the real world and, and finding the win-win solution that's going to keep us all together and collaborating, uh, and in this city that we love for, for a long, long time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments and for the proposed solution. And for your service to the West Lynn community on the school board, of course. Uh, so some folks filing out. Uh, thank you all for coming and being here.
Clayton Filter?
Welcome. State your name and city residence and you have...
There we go. Hi there, Clayton Filter, City of West Lynn. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this topic tonight. Um, I appreciate everyone having opening comments and I can appreciate that this has been a long ride with a lot of, uh, feeling and that idea of what should be, uh, happening versus what looks as though needs to happen if we, if we really, um, care about saving this land for generations. And so that's, I moved back here coming up on three years ago after growing up on Stafford Road and then going to Cedar Oak Elementary School, uh, Cedar Oak Park Primary School, and, and all through high school. Um, when we moved, we made a decision to move back to the United States while living in Vietnam during COVID. And my wife didn't grow up here, but knowing what it's like here, this was where we chose to repatriate. Um, part of that, I, I'm not actually really deeply personally attached to Oppenlander. I didn't, um, play baseball growing up. I did go to Oppenlander though several times. Regardless, like even though we've heard a lot about baseball, it's not just a baseball field, right? It's so much more. Um, and so I was able to make a lot of memories there as a, as a child. Um, and I want the same for my children and everyone else growing up here. So, um, two questions that you posed though, I think it was you, uh, um, Rory, that, one, what is the desired outcome? And also, what is the cost-benefit analysis? So, my, my thoughts on that.
She had the good questions.
Oh, those were Mary's. Okay, thank you. Um, I, I think number one, the desired outcome for me, I mean, obviously it's save the park, right? But the desired outcome that I'd ask of you is give the people a vote on that. And that means I'm asking a heavy lift for some people, but as I understand it, we've, we've done this before in a short timeframe, unfortunately. Um, and that's often when the best work happens, is when it comes down to the wire. So I, I think we can get this on the ballot, I believe, and I, and I, I think that we can give the people a chance to have a vote on this. So that's my, that's my desired outcome. Um, and I would say my personal desired outcome is not that we have an either-or with Parker Road or any other public lands, but this is additive. but this is additive. I don't want to be driving down any roads later and say, oh, that's what we gave up in order to have that. And the cost-benefit analysis, the good news is, I don't think that it is an either-or. I don't think we have to. It is, it's an expense. We've got to make a choice, but we just went out to dinner, my family and I, before coming here. Nothing fancy, just Killer Burger over there, so we could be in the parking lot and just walk right over. So that dinner was more than what the tax implications would be for our family to support saving Oppenlander. So, I don't, I don't see that as cost prohibitive. You've got my vote. And then the idea of like, just this saving or losing this forever, that's where I say we can do something to save this. And it's not about should or, you know, wishing what would have happened. And I think, yeah, there's something better that could have happened. We shouldn't be here, but we are. And so let's us do the right thing and save this land for our kids and future Westland residents. And then also, I do want to just be on the record as saying, however upset people might be with the process, I think I want to be really careful that we're not punishing our schools, which is punishing ourselves in order to teach anybody a lesson. So voting for different school board members or something, if that's, you know, I don't even know how many people are going to want to re- apply for that job. That pays nothing. But I do think we're looking at saving parks, but I don't want to be poking any, any other important entities in the eye in our frustration because this is a partnership that I value. I do work for Westland-Wilsonville School Districts of late since I moved back, but this is part of the reason we moved here, is because this is a well-reputed school. So, thank you for your time tonight, and I hope that you will give us all a chance to have, give the people a chance to vote on what they want to happen with this land.
Thank you for your comments.
Ted Nicholson.
So you are agreeing with Mr. McCabe's comments then? Okay. Mr. Nicholson has stated his agreement with Mr. McCabe, and he will not be speaking. Are you sure? Last chance? You've been sitting here for a while. Okay, thanks.
Carrie Oakes.
Ms. Oakes? Welcome back. Just state your name and city residence, and the clock says three minutes, but you can have a little bit extra time if you need. There we go.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Oakes, and I'm a resident of Westland. And you probably received my email this morning early before I went to work. And I would like to thank you for finally putting some information about this on the agenda. As I expressed in my email, I had planned on weighing in on an option or my opinion, but I didn't feel that I could be prepared without some data. I know many people and many of you, of course, have been actively involved in this for several years. However, not everyone in Westland is, and myself included. So when I saw your agenda in the form that it is, that's why I told you it is highly irregular because it doesn't conform to your council rules that allows people to understand what's on the agenda and understand what you will be considering and see it transparently so that they can make an informed decision. So I come tonight without any comment. I was working all day, and I got here after seven. And so I don't want to see this happen again. If you are going to make a decision, which it sounds like you will be making a very important decision, you need to give sufficient notice to the public. Otherwise, you won't have the support of the public. Okay? And it's in your rules, and I know you know it. And I know the staff knows that. The city manager who helps the council conformed to not only the state public meeting laws, but also your council rules. So what I would have expected, I'm looking at my email here, and I'm just going to pull out a couple of things. So it was disappointing not to understand the process the council is taking tonight and not to have sufficient information in advance of the meeting. It seemed that the agenda was crafted to not divulge this, or it was not in your usual way that I've seen. I read every one of your agendas. So consequently, I do not have any comments on Oppenlander except to say that I appreciated the recent editorial and testimony tonight by former Councilor Terry Cummings for recalling the background on Oppenlander and calling for the school district and city to cooperate in the public's interest. It's unfathomable to me that it's come to this. And I also want to thank you all for your comments before we began tonight because it gave me a better understanding, and it was transparent, and I appreciate that. And I just have to say that I'm very disappointed from what I know now and what I know a little bit with the school district on other, other things that happened in our city, such as the school and some of the things, decisions they've been making. So that's all I have. I really do wish I could have helped you a little better with a comment on going forward. And I hope that I'll see more information about this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We may not make a decision tonight, so if we, to the extent that we don't, we can always weigh in.
I don't see how you can because you didn't notice it with an agenda bill and, you know, indicate that you would be making a decision or take action.
Exactly. So you can continue to provide comments if you have time to review the materials later. And I'll just, I'll just say with regard to the costs that came in, we just saw them today right before they were posted. So those were a work in progress, and yes, we wish they could have been done sooner, but with staffing and things like that, things come up. And this is all, as was stated, a difficult forecast to make when you're talking about unknown costs.
Well, they did it, but I did look back and saw three years ago that was done, and I'd hoped it would have been updated. And this is something that you've known would be probably for consideration since January, and, you know, we're now here in mid-February. So, thank you.
No further comments?
No further comments.
Okay. Well, first of all, thanks to everybody for being here. You could, you could come up and, if you fill out a form, sure. You can do it after. You're the final commenter. I don't know if we'll have the answers, though. I can't promise you that.
Based on, my name is John Zalorn, and I've lived in Westland since 1990. I know there were some numbers banded around, and first of all, I wanted to thank Megan for doing what I thought was a pretty thorough job of attempting to link not only the capital costs, but also the operating costs. Assuming that, and this is just assuming, that there was an additional bond measure that was, you know, agreed upon or adopted by the city voters, would Westland have enough funds to operate the facility if it was purchased?
Do you have further questions? Would you like, should we, we don't really do a Q and A, but ask your questions, then we'll see if we can get some.
Sorry, and then, and the other question is, I know Dean made some estimates of what the cost per individual home would be for a supplemental, an incremental bond measure. And I just would ask Dean what that was based on. In other words, what is the value of the home he's facing that 28 cents? Or, you know, whatever it is, because I've seen lots of, you know, things that are in the voter pamphlets when bond measures are set forth that reference a median price of a home that, at my last comparison, was nowhere near the actual median price of homes in the city of Westland. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so we can, we're going to note the questions. Council Bright is a financial person from the city of Lake Oswego, so she might know something, and then we can also ask about the covering the maintenance.
One point of clarification, the property taxes in Oregon are based on an assessed value, not a real market value. So if you can sell your house for $1 million, your assessed value might only be $500,000. So then you're taking that 28 cents for the $500,000, not the real market value.
Well, seeing that there's no further comments, I just want to thank everybody for their time tonight and coming, and we have a tough situation, a tough decision to make. I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight. We mainly wanted to hear from the community and then evaluate what we heard and think about it. Obviously, there are some, how to say it, arbitrarily imposed deadlines that have caused a situation where we're kind of in a little bit of a rush to if we're going to refer out a bond measure or depend, whatever solution we pursue needs to be talked about and understood and adopted in the near future, especially if it involves a ballot measure timeline. So, but we do have space on the agenda for kind of closing comments and discussion on any potential next steps that I can open for, if folks would like to make closing comments, and Council Gruner, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our staff, even if we had a plan today, could we get something on the ballot by the 28th? It doesn't seem very realistic to me, but I'm not going to tell you, you can't do it.
Lot of, lot of complexities in that question. Technically, perhaps we could. You have to get a lot of things right. You have to speak with the bond council. We would have to know a lot of details about what the council was proposing to put on the ballot measure, price, all of that kind of thing. We would have to do financial calculations along the lines of what we just heard about. We have to get that average assessed valuation information from the county assessor, all of it. So it's quite a lot to do. I don't know if City Attorney has any additional comments, but the deadline is in eight days for the initial ballot title to be completed, if we were to do that for the May election.
Given that we had a firm plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And do you have any comments on the operating costs long-term, to the extent we bought the whole property?
Thank you, Mayor. We've always flagged that as an issue. Adding a new piece of property is a big commitment, especially one with as much use as this one. So it's not currently within our existing staff's ability to do that maintenance. That's why we're flagging the increased cost. There would, we think there would need to be either something dropped off our current agenda or some additional funding made possible on the park side.
Looking to council. So, there's no, there's no guidance on how to proceed from here, unfortunately. So we are here, we're community servants, and we just want to try to see what we can do. And, you know, there are different options on the table. And obviously, I think we'd want to have another meeting at some point to make a decision. Ms. Oakes brought up noticing, and also just from the standpoint of taking in all the information that we hear and and doing that. But then the other issue becomes if you have a, if the council's direction was to do a bond measure, it would require action pretty quickly. So we can all share our general thoughts, or we can reserve for future meeting, and schedule a special meeting, totally up to the council. I'll just, I'll just share a little bit, you know. We have a lot of, this was a few notes I wrote down, just, we have a lot of capital needs. You know, things like an operation center, road infrastructure improvements, cries for transportation safety improvements that we've heard from several different community members, water infrastructure needs. And, you know, when we talk about referring to bond measure, it's kind of a somber thing because I'm cognizant that we can only ask people to raise their taxes so many times. So this, we're talking about probably a $6 to $7 million bond measure because of you have the improvements that aren't factored in at that point. So, and so I'm not taking a position, I'm just saying it's definitely something that we don't want to rush, and we don't want to be thoughtful about. And frankly, I have to say, I was unhappy with how it went last time, when it was a very rushed decision. And so it's very unfortunate that we find ourselves back in the same vote for various reasons with regard to, yeah, the bond process, sorry, to not clarify. The bond process was very rushed, where we were actually up at like midnight, and the TV, the stream was about to go down, and then we had to vote because that was the deadline. So to find ourselves back in that situation is frustrating. So I'm open to different solutions, and I just wanted to share those thoughts because it's not, for us, it's not, and I'm sure for all of you, you recognize it's not a situation of, you know, do we want Oppenlander in the full? Yes, we do. But there's also the cost situation and realities of bond measures, and how if you ask folks to raise their taxes this time, what else can you do, you know, from all these other issues that we've made priorities and talked about this year? So it's something that we should be careful with and thorough in our minds about for moving forward. So, anyway, those are my comments, and I'm going to open the floor to council with ideas of how, whether, how to move forward. Should we schedule another meeting to talk about this, or? Or what does council think? Because we're not going to vote tonight, per se, on any particular outcome. Take in the comments, et cetera. Council Gruner.
Yeah, there have been some very interesting proposals done to split the land, to have Icon do their development. I thought those were interesting proposals. I think we need to evaluate and digest them. And I don't think we can put just a bond issue in front of the public when we feel we have not really fully evaluated other alternatives. So, that's my point.
Thank you for your, those thoughts. So that would seem to be kind of leaning towards another meeting in the future after that. We already had time to evaluate those proposals. I mean, that proposal did just come in today. And we're also, we just got the maintenance numbers today, so it's, because the way the timeline has worked. So, which has been put on by somebody else. Council Bonn.
I have grave concerns about trying to meet that deadline on the 28th. I think even if it were something that was pursued, none of us would be comfortable with it. And there's all sorts of opportunities for that to go wrong. I just don't want to put that on staff. But if that is something we are going to do at all, we might want to decide that we're going to schedule a meeting for that, or decide we're going to head in that direction or rule it out. I think we have to, we have to figure that out soon, although I don't think that necessarily we need to be on that timeline.
Thank you. Council Bright.
This whole thing is very frustrating to me because we're racing to the finish line of a race that we weren't even invited to run in. So, you know, we're being put in a position because of something that has been dumped on us. The school district has owned this property. They have allowed use of this property for 40 years. And now, all of a sudden, if we don't go to the voters for another large bond measure, then we're the bad guys for not saving Oppenlander. for another large bond measure, then we're the bad guys for not saving Oppenlander.
Thank you, Councilor. Council President Baumgartner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what I want to just take a moment to appreciate is all of you sitting here and how much the community cares. And I just feel like we're a family and we just have to figure out how to get what everyone needs fairly. And I, I really don't, my instinct is not to go out for another bond, partly because it's, it's galling to me to just say, keep on paying for this land you've already purchased to the taxpayers. And I understand the, and I appreciate the, the concept of, you know, that a meal that you just had, Mr. Filter, you just talked about this, that was more than it would cost a family a year. But that isn't the way people think when they're voting. I don't, I don't think that is the way. When you're filling out that ballot, you just, a lot of people just see, oh, one more tax, no thanks. So I don't even know if it would be successful. So we could go through the motions and cost and also the, the lost trust, not the people who are sitting here who are maybe willing to do this, to pay a little bit more every year to keep Oppenlander, but the rest of the community who then gets to, well, vote no potentially. And then we go out for another bond for something. And every time they get asked for, we need more money out of your pockets, it wears people out. They get tax fatigue, tax concept fatigue, anyway. So I'm, I'm really not sure what to do next. And I, I hate this timeline. That's, I really, I mean, that, I don't know how much power we have over, over, if someone has an idea of how to shift at least this artificial immediacy. That's what I was thinking, actually.
Well, I'm trying to navigate the boundaries of discussion because we closed public comment, but you didn't, you didn't speak earlier, but your comments have been heard right now, which is can we go to the school board and concern about that issue and relationship? And where?
I think we're gonna have to close this discussion today with the idea that, that we haven't come to a conclusion definitively. Although the thing about not coming to a conclusion, if we're talking about going out for a bond, is that really that needs to be decided tonight. Am I wrong?
Council President, yes. As Council Bonington said, if you were wanting to set up a process, to direct us to start doing that, I mean, we would start tonight probably to get all the pieces in place for you to be able to make a decision by, by the 28th. I do wanna point out, I mean, we've just, the written offer that you have from the school came in January 27th. So it really is an extremely short timeline and why we're here tonight. I wanna point out, there's a November ballot. The November ballot, you have until essentially August to file materials for that ballot.
Thank you. That seems like a lot more reasonable timeline, quite frankly. And I might, I might say that it would be a good thing to advocate for from the public to the school board is give us some more time. So that's, that. There, there are, there are ways. I mean, they're basically the counsel for the school district. So just the way you contact us, you can go to their meetings, you can contact them individually or there's, there's plenty of ways. It's all on the school district's website. But that's, that seems more reasonable, that timeline. So.
I just can't help but feel deja vu. My colleagues, because last time it was the same thing of trying to get more time for the bond measure. History repeats itself if, to the extent a bond measure is what desired by the council. Council Bright, please.
Going to the school board's gonna take a lot of voices. I just, I just wanna say that if, you know, five or 10 people send an email, that's probably not going to make a difference.
Councilor Bonnington?
My immediate sense is that, aside from the fact that I really do not want and, I just won't force staff into this position, it would fail. It would not pass. I don't see any path in which that, that passes. I am happy to not rule out a November one, but this rushed one would all be effort for no reason whatsoever. And I just, I, I can't support that. So.
Thank, thank you for those comments. So I guess this point, we have not really reached a consensus about how to move forward there, things to evaluate and receive more information on from staff. And possibly the, the issue of, not sure if it's a formal council position or a community position of seeking more, seeking more time for November, that, the potential to change the timeline. Although I can just state that the timeline is a, was a very strong sticking point. And I think it has in part to do with the fact that board members are turning over. So folks wanna see this to the end, now whether that, so I, that's what I can say, just from my conversations. Council Bright, did you have another comment? Looks like you did, and I'm not looking over, anybody over here can jump in.
I'm not 100% sure, but I also believe the school district plans a capital bond for November.
So they're gonna, they'll have an ask in November, too. So the, the comment was that the school district's also planning a capital bond measure for November. So they're, you know, we request to have, do this in November potentially. Then you have two bond, two things on the same time. So, well, I think we kind of have a consensus on the council in terms of how to proceed. What? All right, thank you. So I suppose we can, do you feel like you have a direction or non-direction from staff? Are you needing anything from us at this point from the city council? How can we help?
Well, yes, I would be helpful to have further direction. I think one of the questions is, are you, are you making a formal decision tonight to not proceed that you want communicated? Or are we just ending this and moving to schedule additional conversations about some of the options that have been presented tonight?
I think both.
Okay.
I would suggest that if we're not allowed to make a decision tonight formally, the absence of one can serve as one.
You, it's a special meeting, you can make a decision. You heard testimony that, you know, about the materials and about the timeline and all of that. But you're, you're allowed to make a decision in a special meeting.
Okay. I, I would be completely open to scheduling a future conversation about a November ballot measure, but not, not moving forward with this.
And other alternatives as well.
And other alternatives. If we were to pursue a public-private partnership, we would do deeply vet that with the community. That, that would be very important to us. So.
Agreed. Well, I don't think we need, unless folks want to make a motion, I think it's fine to just, that the, the decision of the council is, or the consensus of the council is what has been stated. And we will, we will, we will have another meeting to discuss the other alternatives, including the idea of November and what else has been, what I was trying to think. So brain's going a little dark, but so that's where we're at. And so it's a difficult situation. I just, one of the hardest decisions I've had to make or had to be a part of has been the Oppenlander issue. And it's taken so many twists and turns. And I just wanna, you know, my goal is to just get something for the community. I, that's where I'm at. So just unfortunate if it gets all turned into homes. It's not what any of us intended when we embarked on this path, at least Trump, the president and I for several years ago. And so we'll see what we can do. And with that, I guess I'll close out the discussion. So, and we can take a brief recess and then continue on.
Not, not for the March bond.
Yeah. So I think that, what are you saying, something City Attorney? I'd.
No, I think you're, you're not required to make a decision. I think what I take from this council discussion is that they're not moving forward with the ballot measure that would be on the May ballot. So I.
I think that's the consensus of the council. So it was a unanimous decision, if you will, as he had nods in. It's not for, not because, not because we don't care about the Oppenlander issue. We're gonna try to see what we can do. But it's that, for me at least, that we have so many priorities, as I stated earlier. And we're talking about a six to seven million dollar bond measure. And I don't wanna rush that process and go into that. So based on, that's where I'm at. Others can chime in and.
I agree.
Okay. Well, we still have a couple of items to get to, but shall we take a brief recess?
Nah.
Or continue? Continue, okay.
Okay.
Continue on. Again, thanks to the members of the public for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. Doing the best we can. Yeah. Anytime you can weigh in, and I'm sure we'll have a future meeting to discuss them.
You know, the school district's got, got a gun to our head. We all feel that. And that is a strategy I'm sure that they've employed. They've got a bond issue that's gonna be up in the, they don't want us to have another one. So maybe there's a little bit of negotiating room. But they gotta be willing to talk. And they don't wanna talk.
We'll take a, we'll take a brief recess, two-minute recess. We'll see what we can do.
You know, I served on the Hillsborough City Council. We may have several little situations like this. We've never had a gun to our head.
Holly, what'd you make of that?
... style of this particular administration.
Thanks for being here.
As far as I can see.
My sense is the business management.
Can we secede?
I kept on hoping he'd retire, but they spent all that money. Nothing, and this is full on Dollar Street. I'm renovating the whole area, the whole school. They have an annual operating budget of $50 billion. The city's annual operating budget is maybe $750,000. So.
Well, you know, thinking out of the box, not a bad.
Right. It is a good thing to just kind of think about all the.
They need to think out of the box, too. They're not getting any pressure.
That's exactly.
They're not getting any.
I, I think so, too.
And all, all but one of them is said, Wilsonville resident. And the one who was a Wesleyan resident.
Very, very, way too.
Is that Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah, she was, I went to high school with Kelly.
She has, she has good thoughts, but she, he gets bored over.
Right.
Well, she's getting bored over some shit she can't even manage. And I don't know anything about Kelly other than I did both stuff. But I, I just, I just.
Better not, but our security guy has nowhere to be seen, so.
I, I'm.
You emailed me. You must be popular tonight. If you're running.
Okay, and if you were in Hillsborough?
I was actually in Portland, and I fell back in the 80s. I'm an old guy.
Best kind, smart ones.
Pressure has to be applied sometimes.
Do you live near the parks?
I live, I, yes, I live, I mean, I was, I was more of a settler. But I come to the local, I'm on the corner of the.
Oh, okay.
And so, and you know, the thing is, like, I don't, I think what was the thing tonight is that it was her with all the amenities, because we don't have houses that have, you know, it was kind of like she got all this out. And I was thinking, oh, my God, it's gonna cost so much. I mean, there's nothing, that's what I thought about, there was all these years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the cost, so, so when we.
But it didn't have, that was, that.
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
And we could, we could move slowly.
Are you gonna have?
I have lots to take down. It's one on the top.
Well, there's, there's a problem, I'll bring that. It's my part.
I'm sorry, the high part.
Yeah, yeah. And my. It's not for us, they're, they're all like, Angela, we, and daughter.
You know, I mean, like, our neighborhood, our street, that, you know, I don't know, that is, you know, the town that goes to the malls and.
Not very well, but it, I mean, we make families, I mean, we.
Very nice.
And then of the, like, the park, the park, the gravel.
Yeah. No, that, I mean, the gold, the gold that, our house is on Miles, it's in the park. And the city does provide us a dumpster and park. But then we, and we're here, we used to go by hill. And now we, so I'm, they garden, they garden six months, so we clean the path every year. You know, I can't even see it on the sign that puts out, my husband puts out dog eggs. Another friend has a trash can, he empty all the garbage. So it's kind of like.
Take the village. Thank you for coming.
All right.
Oh, well, that's what I signed up for.
Don't get me started on that because we were told that we had to two houses. Because the old building had to be torn down. Now, perspicacious, like, so it could be nice for pushing stuff. I didn't think that exists.
But I, but I was at this, you know, less than I was.
Be so mad. Well, and at the same time, I was recently retired from an asset account. Spent only about three years. The rest of mine.
Okay, everybody. Well, uh, we've got, we're, we're just, we're, we're. We're just, we're going to continue. We got a couple more things to get to before we can go home for the evening. So we'll continue. Though there's this good discussion going on back there, I'm sure that will continue. Uh, and, uh, we will continue on with our agenda, which we have mayor and council reports, which the first item of business is community advisory group appointments. And, uh, I will place before the council, Alyssa Cruz to the Economic Development Committee, Alex Kraft to the Transportation Advisory Board, and Torsten Kuiper and Jeff Stahler to the Utility Advisory Board.
I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to appoint Alyssa Cruz to the Economic Development Committee, Alex Kraft to the Transportation Advisory Board, and Torsten Kuiper and Jeff Stahler to the Utility Advisory Board. Thank all who have applied, as always. Uh, we have great applicant pool. Makes it difficult to make these selections, one of the hardest things we do, I should say. So, uh, with that, uh, let's see, where we're, call the question. Call the roll.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Mayor Bielski?
Yes. Thank you. So those members are appointed, and we're filling up the ranks of our CAGs. That's great. Uh, reports from community advisory groups, and, uh, I always like to say city business in general, not just your community groups. So councillor Bright.
I did attend the Utility Advisory Board, and everybody on that board will be happy to have a full slate for the next meeting.
Great. That's awesome. Uh, councillor Bonnington has a report.
I, uh, have mentioned my field trip to Astoria back in October a couple of times, but as some of you may have seen in, uh, Oregon Live and in the mail last week, the McLean House is officially, uh, listed on the National Historic Register. And, uh, I think that's really cool.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Groner, anything? Councillor President Baumgartner? I know you had a, this one meeting today, you went to.
I did.
City Council, if you can believe that.
Thank you. I did. I went, well, by Zoom, I attended the Willamette, or, Willamette Falls, uh, sorry, the Willamette Falls Trust. Um, it's getting late, my brain isn't working anymore. Um, and it was, it's always really interesting to listen to, uh, former governor Kate Brown, who's the president now of the trust, and, um, doing some really dynamic, great relationship building and working with PGE. And so the potential future impact of that group is, for our waterfront project, is, is really exciting. So I don't have any firm, um, information yet to provide, but, um, it's really, the potential is really great. So that was a good meeting.
Thank you. I can't think of anything that I have to report, report this week, uh, other than being here for the meeting. And we'll have a South Fork Water Board next week, so everybody can look forward to a report in, in March from that meeting. Uh, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which has a, a temporary permit of entry for Abernathy Bridge construction. Uh, seems like a pretty routine matter. We don't really have discussion on consent agenda items, so we can pull that off if you'd like, if anybody would like to discuss it, or we can approve it. So any objection to the consent agenda? Okay, was there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda for the February 18th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, which includes temporary easements for Abernathy Bridge construction.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, oh, I thought you were saying, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the February 18th, 2025 Westland City Council meeting, which includes temporary easements for Abernathy Bridge construction. Uh, go ahead. Oh, you have a comment on the consent agenda. Okay, I'll, I'll go out of order and we'll take a comment.
Well, it's about, I just have a question about the Abernathy Bridge construction. It reminds me of, there's a family that's needing some support down there and wondered if we had followed up with them.
Okay. Uh, let's take the vote, and then we can talk about that. Uh, take the vote. Call the roll, please.
Councillor President Baumgartner?
Yes.
Councillor Groner?
Yes.
Councillor Bonnington?
Yes.
Councillor Bright?
Yes.
Mayor Bielski?
Thank you. So the consent agenda is approved, that easement agreement is approved. I'm sure ODOT's grateful. Uh, now, councillor president, you had brought on, brought to the floor the issue of the homeowners that live near the bridge project who had some damage to their dock, and we met with them, and you're asking what follow-up we can do, or whether we follow that.
That, that's what I was asking.
So I have not, uh, I'd, so, uh, should we, what should we do? What would you propose? We could reach out to them and, or connect them with state legislators. Uh, we could.
Yes. I think we should do something.
Okay. Are you familiar with that, city manager?
Uh, not in specific. I know what you're talking about, but that's the limit of my knowledge.
We went down to this, we did a visit at this, folks' homes, and they, they had an issue for us, and so we need to follow up. So thank you for the reminder. We'll take care of that. Uh, no action from you on that. So, uh, well, now we go to the highlight of the agenda, the city manager report.
No, not tonight. Tonight you had other highlights. Uh, just real quick, considering the hour, uh, your next meetings are March 3rd, which is a work session, a daytime work session. Um, has a fairly light agenda at this point, and, uh, due to lack of quorum on March 10th, we have moved the business meeting to March 17th, so that'll be a special meeting. Um, we will be taking up that right-of-way vacation again at that meeting. Um, you'll recall, the, the deadlines on comments are, are moving, and the 17th is the decision date. Um, Lauren Breithop will be here with a couple of items related to our financial policies, and, uh, we'll be talking more about process steps for the, uh, operations center contracting. Um, that, the, those are our two scheduled meetings for, um, March at this point. Um, we will talk to the mayor offline about, uh, continued discussion on the Oppenlander issue, and there are still a couple of other things that we're waiting to slot in. So, uh, unless you have anything right now you would like, like to add into March, but we can certainly talk about that.
I'm, I'm interested in talking, and also talking about the transportation and, uh, safety improvements and things, but I'm not sure. It seems like that's slotted in. I don't know if there's a specific timeline.
Yes, it is slotted in. Uh, the TAB will be talking about it in March, and then we have a joint meeting between TAB and council on April 21st.
Okay.
Um, and we will be prepared, they will be prepared, I believe, to talk about both the project lists in the city and funding options that other cities use to, um, accelerate project construction.
That's great.
Um, the only other thing, given the hour, that I would say is that, um, the relatively mild weather event, but still enough to grind Westland briefly to a halt. Um, always, uh, good to, um, do a after-action debrief, which we did, uh, among department heads today. But, uh, our general feeling and our observation from the community is that there was pretty good communication about, uh, what conditions were, what was open, what was closed, um, and pretty good service provided on the roads. Uh, our public works crew was working 12-hour shifts for about a day, day and a half, but, uh, just as a reminder what that means, they're coming in, uh, early in the evening and staying all night overnight and sanding and putting the icier down if appropriate and plowing, um, doing a lot of different work, uh, all night long, and I want to appreciate those folks for doing that. Um, the, really, the main issue that, that comes up, and we did discuss some today, is closure of the steepest streets, and how do we affect those closures, and why is it that people ignore the rules and, um, try those steep streets? Uh, we don't advise that at all. Uh, we're going to look, uh, public works and police are going to be looking at what might we do to create a slightly bigger closure to make it much more obvious what is going on. But again, those closures are put in place by one person who's driving out. It's a, it's an overnight cop who's there, so, um, and we need to continue to allow emergency access and emergency resident access through those. So we can't, we're not talking chains, we're not talking gates. Um, we're talking maybe, uh, slightly increased signage to make it clearer, uh, what the deal is and remind people, um, how much trouble they can get in. Um, personal trouble, personal safety. Um, so that was really our main takeaway from this event. Uh, otherwise seemed, things seemed to go pretty well. And we warmed up fast, and it's going to be 60. So.
Thank you.
That's what I have for you this evening.
We all got a lot of emails from folks on Hidden Springs.
Yes.
Every time. So I, I'm glad, hopefully we can let them know that we're evaluating some different alternatives, because I'm sure they'll be grateful for that. So, anything else, councillor Bright?
Just wanted to say I will not be at the work session on March 3rd. I will be out of town.
Okay. And then, uh, a lot of us will be going to DC for the conference on the March 10th. So March will be, and then councillor Groner will be possibly calling in or absent from the March 17th. So we'll have a little bit of scheduling flux to figure out, and we'll figure out that March 10th meeting as well, offline. Uh, seeing no other business. You'll be missed, councillor Bright. And, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. David, what are you doing here, man?